Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, May 10, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 10, 2020, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 29, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 29, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature when the chairman opens the hearing up for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video. You will be sworn in, and you will be required to give your name and address. Anyone calling in uses *9 to raise their hand and *9 to leave the meeting once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Cantor?
Yeah.
Mr. Hughes has been excused. Mr. Mertens?
Yeah.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Mr. Orozco has been excused. Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Mr. Stanton has been excused. Mr. Gonzalez?
No, Gonzalez, right?
And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the states, to the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Tropicki, you might swear in the professionals, please.
Yes, let's see here. Everyone, please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self of you, God.
I do.
Okay, so tonight, we have Ms. Beam, Ms. Spiro, Mr. Cunliffe, and it looks like Mr. Howard lurking in the background there. There he is. Thank you. All sworn. Thank you, Chairman.
Approval of minutes.
Oh. One second. Let the record show that Matt Gonzalez has just joined the meeting. Matt, you just want to add your presence and say you're here?
Yes, hello, everyone. I am Matthew Gonzalez.
Thank you. Okay, I have no minutes this evening?
Vouchers?
I have no vouchers.
Correspondence?
I don't really have any correspondence, but I think now would be a good time. The application for Brookstone at Casola Farms LLC, it's on tonight's agenda. There was a problem with the notice with the certified list that were sent out, so Mr. Alferi asked that that be moved to another date, and he will notice for it. So if you want to make an announcement for any members of the public?
Well, if anyone from the public is on Zoom tonight on case number BA 2108, Brookstone at Casola Farms LLC, this case is going to be rescheduled for another night, and there will be notice to this.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, resolution. Case number, is that BA? It's still BA, right?
It is BA.
Case number BA 2107, Diana Kelly, resolution granting use variance and bulk variance, eligible voters, Cantor, Mertens, Orozco, Seiya, and Nansen. Do I have a motion for this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mertens.
I'll second it, Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Seiya. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized.
Okay. Case before the board, case number BA 2107, 366 Ramtown Greenville Road LLC. It's a use variance. Application of 366 Ramtown Greenville Road LLC is applicant and owner seeking a use variance approval, bifurcated application to construct a 20,088 square foot warehouse within the wooded portion at the rear of the site and a 1,614 square foot loading breezeway to connect to the existing building. They're also proposing to utilize the existing 17,485 square foot one-story masonry building as warehouse, 14,433 square foot of office space, 3,002 square foot removal of the existing site roadway relocated approximately 150 feet easterly so that it is no longer within the existing 150-foot wetland buffer on-site as well as parking. And three, I really delight, this is really terrible. By creation basins, bio retention basins, I guess it's, bases on premises known as Block 3, Lot 29, 366 Ramtown Greenville Road. This application was originally scheduled to be heard January 25, 2021, when it was carried to April 12, 2021 with no further notice. April 12, the application was carried to May 10, 2021 with no further notice. Expiration date, May 30, 2021. Mr. Pape?
Mr. Chairman, good evening.
I just wanted to let you know, we have six board members. You're entitled to a full board, so I'm just putting that out there to you, you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And because there are six members, we may, at the conclusion, request that the transcript being prepared by our court reporter who's present this evening be distributed to those who are not here this evening. But because there are six members who are here this evening, with your permission, we would like to present our application to you. I know that zoning board time is precious to both you and to the applicant, so with your permission, we'd like to proceed, reserving the right to postpone a vote if we conclude this evening.
Mr. Tropicki?
Mr. Chairman, I have no objection to the request. Mr. Pape has clearly stated that he's willing to proceed, and in the past, in the 20 years or so that I've been on the board, we have done this before, and I point out this evening, Mr. Pape has also brought a court reporter so that there would be a transcript, a verbatim transcript, for the vote to be taken potentially at the next meeting. I know there's a great deal of public interest in this case, Mr. Chair, so I think for the benefit of the public and the board that we should proceed with those guidelines. Okay, Mr. Pape?
Absolutely. So, Mr. Chair, we have our court reporter here. That is not a defensive maneuver. That is for the benefit of all of us. When we present a use variance application, memorializing every statement that we made and every commitment that we make is very important when there's an opportunity to return with a site plan. So we've asked our court reporter to assist us in that regard, and it now will have a second benefit that it'll be available to all of the board members who are not here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, board professionals, and public. Good evening, all. My name is Kenneth Pape. This evening, I have the privilege of representing the applicant and property owner, 366 Ramtown Greenville Road LLC. This property is 366 Ramtown Greenville Road, Lot 29, Block 3. It's a little bit more than a 10-acre parcel. It's located in the AREE2 zone. And since somewhere around 1960, it has been improved with a warehouse building. That warehouse building is owned by our clients and is occupied by our clients, and it is used for their business. They are fully engaged in their business on the site. We'll describe that business to you this evening. The application was originally scheduled to be heard a few months ago, and we asked the board for an adjournment. The purpose of that adjournment was to do a number of things. Our clients reduced the size of the building that they're requesting from over 30,000 to 20,000. And our professional team of engineers and environmental scientists successfully redesigned the site to remove all of the encroachments existing and proposed in any of the environmentally sensitive properties, a substantial feat on the part of the engineers and the environmental scientists. You're going to hear more on that, extensive testimony on that a little bit later. So we have worked diligently at reducing the size of the project and addressing environmental issues. We also took the opportunity to return to your environmental commission for a re-presentation of the application. Dr. Raymond Walker, the environmental scientist, made that presentation last month. And we also spent time with Fire Chief Lewis to make certain that we had remained consistent with his requirements for the site. This is a use variance application, and as this learned and sophisticated board knows, the applicant has a responsibility to return if use variance is granted with a fully engineered site plan. The plan that we present to you this evening is a use variance plan, and you will hear from the engineer that he is very comfortable that it can be fully engineered, but it's not a fully engineered plan, and it's not required to be. The presentation this evening will be made by the following professional witnesses. Mr. Sumanti, Charles Sumanti, is the design engineer, and he will present the overall site plan elements. He'll also introduce the property with aerial photographs to make certain that all of the board members are fully aware of the site's location and the surrounding uses. Mr. Sumanti's testimony will be followed by Steve Radosti. Steve is our architect, and he has worked on creating a new facade for the building that takes an older building that is devoid of architectural features, to say it politely, and bringing it into a more attractive building that is designed to be consistent with the goals and the requirements of Howell Township's architectural guidelines. Dr. Raymond Walker is our environmental scientist. He has led us through all of the environmental investigations, and he'll describe the environmental issues that the property currently is experiencing, and he'll describe the environmental improvements that are proposed by the applicant's redesign. Steven Stefanski and his brother, Steven Stefanski and his brother are here this evening, and I think Steven got the short stick, so he's going to be the one who talks about his family's business. I'm going to spend a few minutes before he's on describing the history of the Stefanski family and the business that they operate from the site. John Ray is our traffic engineer. He'll discuss the road conditions, the category that the road is, our frontage road is, all of the on-site conditions, and will ask that he confirm that the site works safely and that all of the on-site circulation patterns are adequate. He'll also confirm that Chief Lewis has approved the plan. And our final witness is Christine Caphone, our planner, who goes last for a couple of reasons. One, she's the most important, and two, she needs to hear all the fact witnesses and hear it on the record so that she can draw her conclusions as a professional planner. One minor bit of procedure. This application was properly noticed, and the board took jurisdiction at an earlier meeting, and on the record has carried the meeting, the application forward. I would only ask that you confirm that the jurisdiction established by the notices remains valid and in place, and allow us to begin our presentation to you.
Mr. Pape, so noted.
Thank you very much. Without too much further ado, I'll tell you about the Stefanski family. This is a third generation. The Stefanski family began in the food business when the grandfather of the gentleman who are here this evening, Leo Stefanski, began selling food products, fish food products, canned food and fresh fish. And that business has stayed in the family, going from grandfather to father to the sons. The business has remained as it was, a business distributing food product, and it has evolved. The request that we will ask of the board will be to use the building as it's currently being used, and that is as a distributor of food products. The fresh fish portion of the business is not going to be operated at this location. This will be packaged foodstuffs that come in in bulk and then are distributed to the customers. The customers are a very interesting group. This is a very niche business. Our clients provide packaged food to hospitals, including Jersey Shore, Monmouth Medical, Kimball, and Community of Tom's River. They provide food to restaurants, nursing homes, catering companies, a whole litany of schools. They provide food to food banks. They are the provider of food to the American Red Cross, and they have an established clientele. Their goal is to create additional storage on the site, going from roughly 13,000 to 33,000, so that they can store a greater number of food products for their customers. And you'll hear about that from Mr. Stefanski later in the evening. If I could, Mr. Chair, I'd like to call the first witness. I can't see everyone who's in. I trust that Charles Sumanti has been admitted for testimony? Is he?
He's on, and Mr. Pape, why don't I ask all of your witnesses to take the oath this way? You can just continue with your presentation, one to the other.
I'll read off their names for you?
Yeah, I have them here. I just want to make sure that they're all on. So, let's see, so, let's, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 witnesses that are on. Okay, Mr. Pape, if each of you would kindly raise your right hands and take the oath, you swear the testimony you'll give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, shout for God.
Yes, I do.
I do.
Thank you. And Chet, starting with you, can we have your full name for the record?
Charles Sumont, S-U-R-M-O-N-T-E.
Thank you. Good to see you. Mr. Radowski, please. Your name on the record?
Yes, Steve Radosti, R-A-D-O-S-T-I.
Thank you. And Dr. Walker, please.
Raymond Walker, W-A-L-K-E-R.
Thank you. And Mr. Stefanski?
I don't see him.
We just got a text from him that he's under Dubin contracting login, so maybe we have to let him in under Dubin. That's D as in dog, U-B as in boy, I-N.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chris. Well, we'll continue now with what we have, and we'll swear him in later then.
Okay.
Mr. Ray? You're muted, John.
John Ray, R-E-A.
And Chris, we know you're here.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Christine Caphone.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Okay, Stephen is on now. He's under, I see him in the.
Okay, I don't believe, let me just swear him in, and wherever he is. Mr. Stefanski, would you raise your right hand? I swear the testimony you'll give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, shout for God.
We can hear you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all sworn, Mr. Chair.
Before we continue, can Mr. Stefanski please spell his last name for me? Thank you.
Your witnesses.
Thank you. Mr. Sumont, if we could begin with you sharing for the board your professional and educational background.
Certainly. I received my bachelor's degree in engineering in 1984 from Lehigh University, and starting about a year after that, I got into the field of land surveying and engineering. I've been a licensed land surveyor since 1992, licensed engineer since 1993, and I've had my own business since 1999, and I've appeared before many, many boards in Monmouth County over the past 20, 25 years, including this one on maybe a half a dozen occasions. Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd ask if the board will accept Mr. Sumont this evening and allow him to testify as an engineer in his area of expertise?
Without any objections, yes.
Thank you. I knew that I liked Mr. Sumont as a 1975 graduate of Lehigh University. I just figured out why.
Ah-ha.
So, Mr. Sumont, I'm going to ask if you could indicate to the board the exhibits that you intend to rely, and I know that Mr. Howard is there to assist in pulling up the screens if you need any assistance, or do you wish to control the screen?
No, I'd rather not control the screen if I didn't have to, but I believe, I believe A14 through A17 are probably the exhibits I'm going to be referring to. A14 and A15 are aerials. A16 is a colored rendering of our site plan, and A17 is another version of the site plan that just delineates the buffering that we're providing around the perimeter of the property. So probably those four exhibits I would like to be able to refer to.
Okay, we have all four. If you would just let us know which one you need as you're going along.
Yeah, I didn't know if you had an existing conditions plan amongst those exhibits, but I'm thinking A14, I just want to talk about the existing site a little bit, and I'm thinking A14 would probably serve that purpose as well as the existing conditions plan.
Very fine. So if you could describe A14 for the board members, Mr. Sumont?
A14 is a recent aerial photograph with the property outbound delineated in black. The subject property, as you had indicated, is known as Block 3, Lot 29, sits on the northerly side of Ramtown Greenville Road, about 2/10 of a mile up from Arnold. As you see, it's bounded on the west by Muddy Ford Brook. On the right, it's bounded by, I believe it's called Muddy Ford Farm, Muddy Brook Farm, perhaps? And to the northeast is a residential subdivision. The street that's closest to us is known as Michelle Boulevard. As Mr. Pape indicated, the property is about 10 acres, and as you can see, the development of the property is concentrated on that front right, 3 acres, give or take. The building, the existing building is about 17, let me just get my numbers right. The existing building's about 17,800 square feet. That front portion of the building, the front right, is the office space of about 3,400 feet. The warehouse area to the rear is about 14,400 square feet. There's a little bump out on the right side of the building, pretty much just where the office meets the warehouse, of about 500 square feet. That portion of the building is going to be removed as part of the proposal. Access to the property is via a paved driveway about 100 feet to the right of the Brook Crossing, and as you can see, it comes up into the property. You can see a couple of trucks parked up at the butt end of that access drive. And currently, most of the activities take place right in that little niche, that little notch between the office and the warehouse, though there is an open storage yard to the rear of the building. And then to the upper left of the building is another area that's utilized for, you know, some on-site storage of vehicles. The property has a number of environmental constraints. I think I'll just introduce them to you, and I know Dr. Walker will get into them in a little more detail. But obviously, we have a freshwater wetlands. You know, I might switch over to another exhibit, maybe to discuss some of that. Yeah, if we could go to exhibit A16. We marked out a series of environmental constraints associated with the Muddy Ford Brook.
Before, if I may, I just want to make certain, so that this is introduced properly. This is a colored, rendered exhibit. It appears to be a page from your plan set. So if you could just describe which page from your plan set that it was rendered, and then we'll have it marked. Is it officially marked as A16?
I believe it is.
Eileen?
It is A16.
Then, Mr. Sumont, just describe it before you rely upon it, please.
That is our site plan rendered. It's sheet 2 of 5 of my plan set.
Thank you. And the rendering was performed by your office?
Yes.
And the enhancements that are on there were added by your office?
They were.
Now, if you would take us through those enhancements?
Sure. The existing building is that tan, is the tan building, lower left. I'll talk about the proposed improvements in just a little while, but on this plan, we've included the flood hazard line, the freshwater wetlands line as delineated and verified, the transition area associated with the freshwater wetlands, the riparian buffer associated with Muddy Ford Brook, that being a 300-foot riparian buffer, as well as the flood hazard limit per the FEMA flood mapping. So that dark red line is the flood hazard area limit, which is essentially the 100-year flood plain limit. So every, for all intents and purposes, the developable, all the improvements existing and proposed are well-upgraded of the flood hazard line. So from a flooding perspective, that's not a concern as it relates to the application. Though there is the 300-foot riparian buffer associated with Muddy Ford Brook, that's delineated in a pinkish line that traverses from the, our front right property corner, very good, right on. That's the 300-foot riparian buffer line, and Dr. Walker will get into that in a little while. That's that area downgrade of that line is regulated by DEP under the Flood Hazard Area Protection Act.
Mr. Sumont, I'm going to take you back to A15.
And before, can I just interrupt before you go any further? You said that this was just a colorized version of sheet 2. It is not. So I think it needs to be marked separately. I mean, just because the sheet 2 I have does not have all that landscaping shown on it.
Okay. Okay.
So.
All right, so you're right, we, we, it appears we did also add some, some, um, a representation of some existing landscaping and some proposed landscaping.
So it's, it's a, it's enhanced from what we got in our site plan set, Ken?
Thank you.
And we can mark it as A-20 then?
Thank you.
You can still say it's A-16 because it's a colorized variance plan I put on there, last revised March 15th. I didn't even put that it was sheet two of five, so.
Hey, but it was not last revised March 15th, it was revised like probably yesterday.
Well, there's no date on it for yesterday.
Just because this is not last revised March 15th, that's the plan I have, and that's not what it looks like.
Well, I don't know, out of an abundance of caution, let's just call it A-20.
A-20.
Done. Thank you. And the same foundation, Mr. Sumant, your office.
Sorry about the confusion.
You prepared it and you enhanced it for presentation this evening.
That's correct.
Okay. Please take us back to A-15.
Uh, but.
We're on 14, let's go to 15.
Hey, before we do that, real quick, while we're, while, while the sheet is on here, uh, the driveway closest to the Brook, that is the existing driveway, is that correct?
That's correct.
What's happening with that driveway?
That driveway will be removed and replaced by the driveway that you see about 100 feet, 100, 100 odd feet to the north of it, to the east of it.
Okay, now, what, what are you gonna do, I, I know you're gonna remove it, but are you gonna, you know, do wetland planting or replanting of that?
Chair, we have, we have got a, a full presentation on that restoration plan. And if, if you wish to hear it now, we can, there is a sequence, yeah.
That's okay, I, I just, while it was there, a little explanation, okay.
Sure.
A-15.
A-15, please, Mr. Howard. And with A-15, if, Mr. Sumant, if you could just describe what we're seeing in A-15, just so that all the board members can get a big picture.
A-14 is just, A, is a, A-15, I'm sorry, is, is just a, a broader aerial view of the subject property, probably extending probably, you know, almost a half a mile, uh, right and left, up and down.
And again, the black outline is our client's property.
Yeah, yes, it is.
And at the bottom of the, of our client's property is Ramtown Greenville Road, the property, the road upon which we have access.
That's correct.
And it's my understanding that's a collector road, right?
I believe it is.
Okay. All right, I think now would be a good time to go to what was originally called A-16 and now is called A-20. And together, let's go through the elements of the plan.
Okay. Okay, so the, the tan building, uh, front left is the existing building. Um, you can see at the lower part of that building is a, a little rectangle. Um, it's, uh, that's the portion of the building that's going to be removed, that's the portion that's, uh, I'm gonna, if I speak in north and south, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're going to call, uh, north to the right. East down, south left, west, uh, west up. So, um, to the south, to the east of the building is that hatched rectangle, that's the portion of the building that will be removed. So the existing building is about 17,800 square feet, we're, we'll be removing about 500 square feet of it.
And the reason for removing it is, it's in the buffer and it's, it, it has no reason for it to remain. It has limited utility, by removing it, we can create a more complete buffer.
That's, that's correct, yes.
Take us, continue, please, Mr. Sumant.
So the, uh, the proposed building is the, is the darker shaded building in brown. The main warehouse is 20,000 square feet. It'll, the existing and the proposed building will be linked by a breezeway that will also serve as the, uh, loading dock for, for both warehouses. Uh, so the access, as you can see, will now come in on the east side of the subject property. And we've, uh, we've laid out the driveway, um, and all the parking areas and all the truck and emergency vehicle maneuvering areas in such a manner that we've, um, stayed upland of the wetlands, uh, transition area line. But, uh, to, to get you in there, we're, we're, we'll come up the driveway, it's a two-way driveway. There'll be four parking spaces up front by the office. Um, as you pass by the existing building, uh, there'll be four loading dock spaces to the right. Uh, and then as you proceed toward the proposed building, the balance of the parking, I believe another 16 spaces will be, um, proposed along the west side of the proposed warehouse. Uh, that's of course also a two-way driveway all the way to the rear. There is a drive aisle proposed at the back of the property. Uh, that is required for, um, emergency vehicles, uh, to be able to get to the back of the property and then be able to turn around and exit the property. And, um, uh, that, that layout, I believe, was, was presented to the fire marshal and, um, and approved by, by his office.
Yeah, I, having sat with Chief Lewis on this plan, I can share with the board that Mr. Sumant's description of that design and Chief Lewis's recommendations is accurate. Please continue.
The site as it exists now really has no formal, uh, refuse, uh, storage area. That area is being proposed adjacent to the, uh, the pond labeled Bio Retention Basin Number Two. It's, um, it's, there it is, you've got it, that's, that's the proposed refuse area. And then next to the refuse area is a, is just an area to assist, uh, the trucks in being able to come out of the loading dock and be able to, uh, to turn around and exit the site.
Real quick, uh, the, the refuge area, is that's going to be masonry?
Mr. Chair, at, at site plan, it would be fully developed, we anticipate it would be masonry and it would be designed to be conforming with the masonry facade of the, the building.
Thank you.
Just ask a clarifying question too, so that, uh, 30 foot wide, or is it 20 foot wide at the back of the proposed building?
Yes.
The 20 foot wide, uh, so it's the north end of the building, so right-hand side here? That's just for emergency access, right? So that's going to be striped with fire lanes and signage, so that way there's no way that could be used for loading or any purposes like that?
No, it would, it would be inappropriate for loading, um, because it's at the, at the far end of the building closest to our residential neighbors. It would only be for the fire vehicle to have one more facade, one more side of the building.
That's fine, yeah, I just want to make sure it's clear for the board that it's just for emergency access purposes, not for loading. You have the four spots that are in between the existing and the proposed building. And then, Chad, I was wondering if you could also, um, talk about the site parking. So I think you previously said the existing building had 3,400 square feet of office and there's only four parking spaces at that front building. For 3,400 square feet, our, our ordinance requires 11, um, spaces for that office use. Now, I know you have office in the back, I'm just wondering how access-wise pedestrians are getting into both buildings, if you can elaborate on that a little bit.
Uh, I, I think I understood your question, you, you're asking, you're, you're asking.
There's no site sidewalks and, you know, there's only four parking spaces for, you know, uh, office use at the front building that requires 11 spaces. Just how is that accessed? How does pedestrian circulation work on the site?
Well, the, the, other users of the, of the office would, would obviously park in, in the rear adjacent to the, uh, adjacent to the warehouse. Um, and then would enter the warehouse, uh, exit, you know, enter the warehouse, walk through the warehouse, the breezeway, uh, and the, uh, existing warehouse to, to get to the office area. Um, due to site constraints, there's, there's just no way to get more than four parking spaces, uh, up front. Right now, there are more than four parking spaces, but, uh, that's because, you know, that, that layout doesn't, uh, doesn't consider the environmental constraints. You can see, you can see the parking lot, it's, it's on, you can see the parking lot there, there's about, uh, there's about eight or nine spaces up front now.
So, so the breezeway, in your opinion, is that, or maybe this is even a question first for Steven, is adequately sized for both loading and unloading, but also pedestrian access to accommodate both of that? So we're not having people walking down the 30-foot circulation aisle when a fire is happening and a fire truck's driving in there, right?
No. Yeah, Steve, that's, we appreciate that question, I'll make certain that Steve, um, addresses it.
I just want to make sure the board is thinking about it, you know, looking at the site, they're not seeing sidewalks, there's other access points for pedestrians to get to both buildings.
Yeah. So, if Mr. Sumant, I just, if you could go back to just describing some of these elements. Um, I appreciate that you just described that the parking lot that exists is in an area that's environmentally sensitive, so we're pulling it out. Um, if you can, and, and also, there's some changes to the driveways, you've described one in response to the chairman's inquiry. If you could confirm that the existing driveway that is entirely in an environmentally constrained portion of the site will be eliminated, um, and, and describe the, the, the exact location of the new driveway.
Yes, the, uh, the existing driveway is, is, is not only within the riparian buffer, uh, it's also in the wetlands transition area, uh, buffer as well. So, um, yes, that, that driveway in its entirety will be removed, the driveway will be relocated to the east, uh, about 100, 120 feet to the east. It will, it will clip a portion of the riparian buffer, but it's the most, it's the most extreme, uh, portion of the riparian buffer. And the, uh, state regulations in regard to riparian buffers do afford a limited amount of disturbance uh, within the buffer. So, uh, that layout does comply with the, uh, state standards as it relates to a disturbance. And, um, the driveway in its entirety would be well, well upland of the, uh, wetlands, uh, transition area. So that's a, that's a, that's a 30-foot wide, um, driveway. Um, holding that 30-foot wide dimension all the way through from front to back. It might let down, I think, it, yeah, reduces to 24 feet as we get to the rear.
And on the original plan, the 1960 plan, is there any stormwater management system at all?
No, no, there's no, no means of collecting stormwater, no means of even, uh, you know, diverting stormwater into a, uh, any type of controlled situation. Uh, it's just, uh, it's just sheet flows, uh, toward Muddy Ford Brook through the property.
And if you could describe, first, your, I trust that you have become familiar with the March 2021 stormwater regulations that were part of Howell Township's ordinances, as well as part of, that originated at the DEP. Trust that you're, and if you could describe the stormwater management system that is proposed? And if you would please confirm that it is designed, is intended to be consistent with both of those modern regulations?
Uh, yes, the, the, the main thrust of the, of the new requirements is to eliminate the old design method of just gathering everything up in one rather large basin. The site has been set up with three basins, each designed to pick up a limited amount of stormwater from, uh, the parking lot areas. The basin, the basin at the rear, uh, well, I think it's labeled Basin Three, will drain into Basin Two, Basin Two will be connected to Basin One. But they will each act independently as a water quality treatment basin. And then they will also serve as a stormwater quantity, uh, basin for the means, uh, of, uh, detention and control of outflow. So they're all, they're all linked, but they've all been designed, but, uh, in accordance with the state standards in that they only, each pick up a, a small percentage of the parking lot area. Again, rather than one large basin that would pick up, uh, the entire, um, site. Curbing is discouraged now, so the, um, the, um, the water will sheet flow rather than be concentrated. It'll, it'll sheet flow right into the basins, be treated in the basins and then be piped out to, uh, the municipal system in Ramtown Greenville Road. And we've done an exhaustive, uh, soil investigation. Uh, I believe, I believe we've done 12 profile pits throughout the property, uh, in the areas of the basins to ensure that the, uh, basin designs will, uh, are prudent, are correct, and, um, will, um, will perform as, as designed.
So, although this is a, uh, it's a use variance sketch, there's a, a lot of information that you were asked to generate to make certain that this application could progress to a site plan. So y- your knowledge of the soils and the water table are sufficient for you to share your opinion with the board? And if this were to be granted a use variance, that you can and you will be able to design this stormwater system, which is intended to be fully compliant with the 2021 regulations?
Yes, this, this, the, the system that you see depicted on the plan is, is 95% designed, uh, right now. We're, we're, we're 100% confident that it's, uh, that it will, uh, meet the, the standards of the township and the state.
There are other elements of a site plan that I would ask that you testify to being able to satisfy. For instance, lighting, we will have an obligation to provide adequate lighting and to assure there's no spillage onto our neighbors. Are you comfortable advising the board that you can and you will design a lighting system that's consistent with those requirements?
Yes, we will. Yes, that is one thing we did not do, but we, we absolutely plan on designing a, a compliant, uh, lighting plan.
And that lighting plan would not spill any light onto our adjacent neighbors' properties?
No, and, and just one other thing to consider that you, you know, you'd have to lift the top up pretty closely to see, but we're, we're down, we're down, we're down five, six, seven, eight feet relative to our adjoining property owner. So, um, you know, it's not, it's not a situation where we sit up above them and we would, uh, our illumination would, uh, would stand out from the area. But, uh, yes, to answer your question directly, we, there's no problem in, in developing a, a proper lighting plan.
Right. I appreciate that you've confirmed that these disturbances, that the existing disturbances will be removed from the wetlands and the flood hazard area. I think we'll leave the, some of that detail to Dr. Walker to discuss the, the benefits of those changes. Uh, I would ask, so that we're looking at a plan that has been enhanced with landscaping. If you could describe in response to Mr. Chairman Nansen's question, uh, the areas, there are areas on this site that are going to be restored, areas of current encroachments into the environmentally sensitive properties. What is our client's intention with regard to those, those areas?
Well, I can, I could point out one large area, and that would be, um, that would be directly above the, uh, upper right corner of the existing building. There's a, uh, there's a cleared area that's surrounded by a chain link fence. It's, um, wow, it's probably, it's probably close, it's probably eight, it's probably eight, 10,000 square feet, maybe larger. Um, our intention is to remove all that fencing and to restore that, that, uh, that area. It's, um, the rendering shows some plantings in there, it shows, yeah, right in there, that's the area I'm speaking about. That, that area's been disturbed for quite some time, and that's, uh, that's one area that, uh, that our landscaping plan will, in detail and working with your landscape consultant, uh, restore that area properly.
And, and Mr. Chair, members of the board, the goal is to get these encroachments, these environmental encroachments that occurred long before environmental laws were in place, to get, to remove them in their entirety and to use indigenous species and allow them to return to a naturalized condition. And Mr. Sumant, if you could similarly confirm that the driveway when removed, just describe how that area would be restored.
Well, I imagine we'll, we'll plant there as well, though there are some, there are some existing trees along that driveway currently existing that are, that are, uh, that are, uh, quite healthy and viable, uh, but we'll, we'll expand upon that to, uh, to restore that area.
So what is, what does that entail? Is it, we're removing the asphalt, we're replanting with grass? Or are we also putting in tree plantings? I just want to make sure it's clear for the board on what's being proposed.
We would look forward to working with Ms. Spiro and the board to come up with plantings that are indigenous and plantings that will restore a natural condition. But we would defer to Ms. Spiro's expertise at the time of a site plan.
Um, just so everyone's aware, the, that driveway is planted like a, a, a street tree, you know, layout. So we're probably not going to get much in the space of where the driveway actually is because the trees are, you know, they're semi-mature. They have a big canopy right now. So it's probably pretty shaded. I don't know how much have, you know, maybe a few more trees, but I would say most of the plantings would have to be on either side of the driveway, not in the driveway.
Uh huh. We will, uh, look forward to your guidance.
My, my other question is the riparian buffer. I, I know it, the state allows certain percentages. With the new driveway going in there, is, is that going to require a variance in approvals from DEP?
Well, a permit, they don't give variances. It'll be a permit.
Yeah, a permit from the DEP.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, to clarify, and I'm, I'm assuming, uh, Mr. Walker will touch on it too. So it's, it's a three hundred foot riparian buffer because it's a category one water. They're removing the existing site driveway, and I believe all the proposed improvements are in the outer one hundred and fifty feet of that riparian buffer, which there's certain, um, you know, it's a little bit more lenient with the permitting rules. You still have to get a permit from DEP for flood hazard area and everything like that, but there's a little bit more, um, uh, leniency with them on, on what you can do in the outer one fifty as opposed to the inner one fifty. So the driveway and any other disturbances are being removed and revegetated in that inner one fifty. Is that correct, Ken?
Yes, that's the inner one fifty, and is, that's all being removed, and the new driveway is the greatest distance possible away from the stream corridor, and it is outside of the first hundred and fifty feet. That's correct.
Yeah, that's where I was going with that. Okay.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Sumant, I have no further direct. Um, I would ask that, is there any element of the plan that you feel that we have not brought to the attention of the board?
Well, I just, I, I just want to point out that we're, we're, we're obviously adhering to the requirement of, of uh, either maintaining or establishing a fifty foot buffer around the vegetated buffer around the perimeter of the property.
What about the farmland buffer?
Along, along our east property line?
Yes.
Yes, that, except for that, except for that, that small area where the current building clips it in its, uh, southeast corner, we're maintaining a, uh, a fifty foot farmland buffer along our east property line.
The Chair, Chairman, we found that we could remove that bump out. It, it really, I'm going to call it a vestigial remnant of the building. We're going to take that bump out off, but that little sliver of a triangle of the main structure would be an encroachment into the farmland buffer. But in all other respects, the buffer is intact, and that small, small nip of the building where the, where alongside property that is governmentally owned, it's not privately owned.
Well, my, my question with that, uh, when was that building built?
We traced it back to nineteen sixty with aerial photographs.
Okay, in nineteen sixty, did we have a farmland buffer?
Uh, I don't think that you did.
No.
I don't think there was anything like that. We certainly found no environmental or stormwater protection.
And for it to only be a piece, I don't think I would have a problem. What I do have a problem with is how our ordinances are written with the farmland buffer. That's supposed to be a undisturbed buffer. And I see a lot of landscaping. I see a lot of.
Well, they're required to put the double row in the farm buffer. That's, that's a requirement of the ordinance.
No, I, I understand it, but are they gonna let that just go natural?
I mean, that's going to be, I guess, testimony. Chad, are you going to testify to the landscaping?
Well, there's, there's some, there's some landscaping existing, and we're proposing to enhance it, fortify it as necessary to meet the, uh, to meet the intent of the ordinance.
Right, but this is not something that was on your plan set that was submitted. This is something that we're looking at just on this color rendering. So it's something that's going to have to come in and be reviewed by Shari in order for us to, to be in a position to say that it's acceptable or not, correct?
Absolutely. Again, we're, we're, uh, you know, I, I know you're looking, you're looking at a lot here, but yes, we're, we're, we're not here for site plan approval yet.
Yeah, but not for nothing, respectfully, we had a multiple TRCs. We expressed in no uncertain terms how Sanca sang the buffers are, especially the farm buffer. Quite frankly, this should have been submitted to us before. We shouldn't be looking at it for the first time today. And, and quite honestly, I don't, this is not a, this is not a deferred to site plan situation. You're here for a use variance. The buffer, or lack thereof, could potentially create a negative impact that would impact your variance testimony. So I'm not okay with it being deferred to site plan.
Okay, understood. So what we, what we're able to do this evening is to make the commitment to the board that we are now, we are informed, and, and as Ms. Beam has said, we, Charlie and, and Ms. Beam did bring to our attention that this is an area that requires a farmland buffer. It's for that reason that the bump out was removed, and we make the commitment to this board that we intend to design that as a fully compliant farmland buffer. We defer to the board and to your professionals as to what comfort level you have. Um, well, clearly with, 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 uh, the board not voting this evening, there'll be an opportunity to supplement the plan, and so, so we will.
Further, can we talk about the grading then in that area? Because I see that you have some grading, but I know that that's outside the fifty feet. Does that tie into existing grading like at that line, or are you expecting to grade into that area as well?
Mr. Sumant, can you handle that one, please?
All of our proposed grading is, is, is outside the fifty foot buffer line. Our intent, our, our intent is to, is to not grade within the buffer.
Well, it's not, our intent is, is I will not.
The plan, the plan clearly indicates no proposed grading in the buffer.
So those contours that I'm seeing like right up against that fifty foot buffer line, they're tying into existing grade?
Yes. Yeah, otherwise it wouldn't have made them so tight. I mean.
Well, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
So Ken, and I think it's just important to clarify for the board, there is, um, like relief of disturbance in the buffer for a proposed sanitary lateral for the, you know, the rear building. And Chad, if you could just talk about that on the location, why it's there, is it co-located with the lateral for the existing building? Um, you know, have you minimized the disturbance of the buffer to the greatest extent, you know, practical?
Uh, I think you just pretty well said it. One thing I, I, I neglected to indicate to the board was the fact that the applicant has, has brought, uh, has, has provided sewer and water here. Um, and, and yes, the, the, the reason that, that it's placed as, as is is to, uh, to minimize the disturbance.
Yes, so you, so you could have, from the back building, ran perpendicular right out and tied into the sewer, but you're running it, you know, in a southerly direction or whatever. Uh, I guess it's in the lower left-hand side where the existing building is, and then coming across where the existing lateral is to try to minimize the disturbance where there is already some pre-existing disturbance, correct?
Yeah, the, the, the grading's easier to work with. It's a flatter area. It's just a, it's just an easier excavation through that area.
And then kind of just before we jump in, I didn't want to cut you off with too much with the stormwater management. Um, I'd say generally, you know, I, we're still, it's just a use variance. They provide a pretty detailed stormwater calculations. I think it's like Chad said, ninety to ninety-five percent there, but there's still some stuff, Ken, just when it gets to site plan that needs to be, uh, you know, clarified in the report with regarding additional soil test pits, infiltration tests, um, you know, just, uh, formality stuff with the stormwater management when it gets to the site plan. I think what you have shown is conceptually pretty, pretty close to, to a full design, and I, as long as you can address those at site plan, I, I have no issue with the stormwater.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair and Board Members. Mr. Cunliss's comments this evening are consistent, consistent with, I'm sorry, my phone just rang. The, 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 um, it's consistent with the guidance that we've received this, the past four or five months working with him. It, the reason that we have twelve test bits and the reason that it's this fully designed is so that we can demonstrate to the board and to Charlie that it is a real plan. But we certainly recognize that at site plan, all of the elements are necessary, so. And, and we remain committed to.
I have another question with, with Charlie. Charlie, I, I know a site plan will, will deal with this, also with the architectures will deal with it, but as far as the store, the roof drains and, and roof leaders, i- is that going to be through dry wells, or will that go through these?
So I guess that's really a question for Chad. Is the plan to have the roof leaders daylight to the pavement surface and then sheet flow across? Or are we going to have those separately piped in or tied into the proposed conveying system? I think that would be the preferred, uh, if possible, so we don't have, you know, additional runoff sheet flow in or icing across the driveway. Is that something that can be accommodated?
Yes, I, 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 I'm, it's likely that's the scenario, uh, that, that we'll, we'll use to, uh, to pipe the roof.
Okay.
So and to answer your question a little bit, Mr. Chair, the stormwater management report, all the areas of impervious cover and, you know, disturbance are routed to these different basins. It's just a matter of, you know, them tying it into a pipe and then directly connecting it to the basin versus overland flow. So it's all accounted in the stormwater management design. It's just if we can get it into a pipe and it's not running along a pavement surface, that's the preferred.
Okay. And then my, my other question is, once, uh, the areas of disturbance are restored, now the existing driveway, uh, the chain link fence area that, that's open right there, the, the replanting, regrading, that is going to flow to the book, correct? That's not going to sheet flow back to the retention, is it?
That's correct. That, that, that area flows to the book.
Okay.
And what we have not mentioned, I think this would be an appropriate time, as this plan progresses, there will be areas that we anticipate that this board would like to see in, in, uh, in conservation easements to make certain that these areas remain preserved. There are DEP requirements of conservation easements, but we certainly are prepared to work with this board to create conservation easements to assure that the disturbed areas after restoration stay in that restored condition.
Ken, and just one last point. I think it's important for the board, board to note too, and, and Chad can talk about the proposed grading of the site. There, you know, your basins and everything like that, and the slopes tying into existing grade, everything is below the, the adjacent grade. So it's not like these grass areas around your basin are being directed to, onto adjacent properties and creating any runoff issues. Everything is draining to your proposed stormwater management su- system. That's, is that accurate?
That's very accurate. It cuts as much as seven, eight feet in the back.
Charlie?
Yes?
I have a question. You know, I'm looking at the overheads and so forth. This newly proposed thirty-five, thirty foot wide ingress egress, what's the closest cross street to that? Is that Maria Lane, Mistletoe? Which one is it?
Uh, so to this, let me get my bearings right here. To the, to the west or to the, so to the west, you have Arnold Boulevard, which is on the other side of muddy Ford Brook. And to the east, the closest you have is, I think Moses Milk Drive, which is a self-enclosed like loop off of Ramtown Greenville Road.
Roger. All right, thank you.
I think you're right.
The Chair, Chair, I have nothing further on direct of Mr. Sumant other than to ask that he confirm that if this use variance relief is granted, that he is comfortable, that he can fully engineer the plan um, in accordance with the use variance sketch that's presented to you this evening.
Yes, I am, Mr. Page.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Page, if they have any questions of the witness here, um, Matt, can we get full screen with the board? Okay, thank you. Mr. Martins, do you have any questions of this witness?
Yes, this may be for the engineer or for the applicant. I noticed the, there's four loading zones. What size trucks are we looking at that are going to be used for? No spots.
Sure. There's, there's testimony from the applicant and from Mr. Ray, but I can share with you that we receive our materials in tractor trailers two a day, and we distribute our materials in twenty foot straight trucks. We may be replacing them with twenty-eight foot straight trucks. So those are the two types of truck vehicles that we have on site. And I'll ask Mr. Ray to confirm that.
That's the maximum amount, the length, or is this, you know, potentially down the road, there could be longer length trucks?
Yeah, well, we, we do, you'll hear that it's designed to handle the, the full articulated tractor trailer, which will be district bringing product, and actually does now. There, there, there's, they do now come to the site, get in, drop their product and leave.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my outline, sir. There'll be testimony from the operations and traffic shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Sam?
I'm still looking. Still paying attention here. No more questions. It's so good.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Cantor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have a question about the pedestrian flow from that back parking lot to the, the front office. It, it doesn't seem in the designs that there were doors or ways for people to get in and out of the warehouse, so, um, just kind of questioning that part of it.
We'll make, we'll, we'll, we'll have Mr. Adasi talk about mandor access to the building, how you can get to the front.
Okay. Mr. Moretti?
No questions at this time.
Okay, uh, Mr. Page?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, well, I was gonna come, come back to you. I, I, let me ask a question.
Oh, sorry, I thought you.
I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Page, uh, real quick, the there, there's going to have to be applications at some point in time to the DEP for, for the riparian buffer. Am I correct?
Yeah, and a lot has been done, Mr. Chair, and I, I, I was going to do Steve next, but I think that this, that Dr. Walker's testimony is really where we need to go as the next witness, so I'll go to him next.
That it ends that quick. Okay, Ms. Beam?
Um, Chad, I don't know if this is you or this is operations, but I'm just going to ask you and then you can tell me. Um, and I think I know the answer, but for the record, both buildings are going to be occupied by one user, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
But it's not going to be leased out to multiple users. It's a single user.
That's, that is correct. I can, I can make that statement on behalf of our client. This is owner occupied. It is one family that will be using it. There are no tenants. We are prepared to commit to there being no tenants other than the owner occupant.
And the, so where your, where your proposed building is, there's like the water tower and the shed. Are those just being removed? Are they going to be relocated? Um, or is it just, you know, there, are they in operation? Is the water tower in operation?
The water tower has fallen apart, according to Chief Lewis, a very long time ago.
So it's coming down and that's not going to be replaced?
It's coming down. It's not going to be replaced. It was built at a time that there was no water supply in the area. Only Chief Lewis's clear recollection was that it served as a firefighting water supply. It, it just fell apart. It was left in that condition for many years. And when Mr. Dubin, the contractor, brought the water supply to the building, it actually became not necessary. There's now a firefighting water supply.
Okay.
And, and the applicant will comply with any requirements regarding sprinklers for building and fire?
I'm sorry.
The applicant will comply with any fire official and building code requirements for sprinklers or anything like that, should it be required for the new building?
Yes, yes, yes. We'll work with construction and Chief Lewis on all of that.
And, and I'm, again, I'm not sure, Chad, if this is you. And, and I'm, again, I'm not sure, Chad, if this is you, but the trash enclosure that you're showing, and I know this is not site plan, is that going to be big enough for this facility? I mean, you're talking about like almost, what, almost forty thousand square feet? And it looks like a really small area for the enclosure.
Could be.
Probably about four, it's probably about three, four hundred square feet. I don't have the exact dimensions, but, um, but we'll sit down with the, we'll sit down with the applicant and extrapolate out based on his current, uh, refuse, what, what would be an appropriate sized area.
So that's something that we would put off to site plan?
I would say.
Actual sizing of it, we'll, we'll, we'll take another look at it and make sure it's adequate.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry.
Our trash is primarily cardboard. We may be an excellent candidate for a compactor.
Yeah, it's something to think about, because when I looked at it, it just looked really small relative to the size of the facility.
That was, that was my next question, because right now I believe cardboard is eighty dollars a ton or something that they, they're recycling it, so.
Is any of the warehouse proposed to be refrigerated now that the fish uh, operations is no longer going to be done on the site?
There is currently two thousand one hundred plus or minus square feet of refrigerator, of, of freezer in the existing building. It's there. And there's roughly thirteen hundred square feet, and Mr. Dubin, if I didn't get those numbers correct, help me, thirteen hundred feet of refrigerator. So there's thirteen hundred of refrigerator, two thousand of freezer. And there's most likely going to be a similar amount in the new building. It hasn't, the interior hasn't been designed, but it would be something on that order. There's some materials that would be kept frozen or cold.
Okay, and then lastly, any, any signage?
I said, we, we are not, and we're not open to the public. The public does not come to us. We have zero retail. The only people who are there are the people bringing food product and people who work for us to pack it and, and, and truck it to our customers. So we definitely need to have a sign that identifies us for safety purposes, but the signage is very, very limited. We're, we're not bringing the public to our site. They get function now without signage and it works just fine.
So you're not proposing any signage right now?
There's no signage proposed at use fer inch. We, we, we'll certainly have something that is adequate for fire and emergency services to find our building at the time of a site plan presentation.
Good.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Charlie?
Ken, um, with the utilities, the applicant's already extended, uh, water main to the site, right?
Yeah.
And that's something that previously didn't exist in the area?
It, well, it, there, when our clients bought the property, it was on well and septic, but there was water and sewer in the street, so they brought them in.
And does that also service adjacent properties?
Does, well, the, the.
Service, it's, it's not just for your property, right? It also provides water to adjacent properties still?
Well, Mr. Samont, if you could confirm, in the street, there's a water supply that we tapped into.
Yes.
Oh, so you didn't, you didn't run a water main extension down Rantown Greenville Road as well? To your property, did you?
That's not my understanding. I, I, Mr., uh, Mr. Dubin, if you could just give me a message on that one, please. Thank you. Yeah, the, Mr., it's my understanding that we did extend down the roadway and along the roadway also installed, we, fire hydrants. So our decline did do the extension to our property and then brought it in and along that road, route installed fire hydrants. So yes, the, the extended water line is available to others. It's not private.
Got you. Uh, and then, let me just, uh, any other proposed utilities? I mean, it's already, building's already serviced by overhead electric. I mean, it's just going to be connected in the same manner, right?
There, there's, there's no other utilities that need to be brought to the site. It, it's already connected. That's correct.
All right.
Is there sewer, sanitary sewer?
There is, and our clients have already brought it into the site. They've abandoned the septic and they're on sewer.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, there's a, there's an existing line along the Easterly property line in, in an easement, and they're tying into that existing sanitary system. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Pape, uh, at this time, I'm gonna, let's see here. At this time, uh, the board's going to take a five-minute break?
Okay.
And then we'll move on to the next witness. Are, are we going to hold off till the, till the end of the testimony, or do you want to open up the public?
I, I, I believe that the testimony from the individuals alone is incomplete. And I think that if you would allow us to do so, I think at the conclusion of the fact witnesses would be an ideal time to, uh, open to the public, but I'll defer to you and whatever, all of our witnesses will always remain available.
I, I'll let Mr. Tropoli address that and put.
Mr. Chair, again, you know, there's a substantial public interest in this, but I think just in terms of continuity, I would suggest to Mr. Pape that he present a direct testimony of each of his witness and defer public questions and cross-examination until that time when he concludes this case. I think that's cleaner. I think that we would probably lose the, um, the perspective if we break it up. Mr. Pape, that would be my advice to you.
I appreciate the advice. We'll be very careful and thorough in our direct presentation and we will, we, I give the assurances to the board and the public. All witnesses who testify will remain available through the conclusion of this hearing, whether it's tonight or another night.
And I think in that way, a lot of the public's questions would be answered perhaps with your successive witnesses moving forward.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
Redundant questions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Aileen, we're going to take a five-minute break here.
The board will now recess. They'll be back at eight twenty-seven.
Our board members are back. Okay. Mr. Pape?
Yes.
Call your next witness?
Yes, and, um, the board has reconvened?
Yes.
Yes, very, thank you very much. Mr. Chair, board members, board professionals, Dr. Raymond Walker is the environmental scientist who has led us through the environmental issues with the site, first helping us to identify them and then helping us to address them through the permitting process. I've asked that he, uh, describe all of the issues that were, were present and all of the issues that would be removed if this plan were to be approved. Dr. Walker, if we could hear from you with regard to your credentials, both your professional educational background before beginning the testimony?
Sure. Uh, I've got a bachelor of environmental biology from Manhattan College. I have a, uh, doctorate degree from Rutgers University in ecology with, uh, special emphasis in wetland ecology. I've taught at a number of colleges and universities in the areas in the early eighties, mainly courses in the eco botanical sciences. Uh, I was employed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Philadelphia District Regulatory Branch as, uh, chief of their surveillance and enforcement responsible for enforcing provisions of the Clean Water Act as it relates to permits for wetland activities or activities in waters of the United States. And for about the last thirty-five years, I've been practicing as a private consultant, uh, at various engineering firms in New Jersey. Currently, I am at, uh, Colliers Engineering Design, have been there about thirty years. I have been certified as an expert in federal court, state court, numerous zoning boards. I have testified before this board in the past, uh, so, uh, it's kind of a brief synopsis.
We, we accept your credentials, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. So Dr. Walker will testify as an environmental scientist this evening. And, and Dr. Walker, I'm going to ask if you would, in a narrative, I, I think it would be best if I, I didn't interrupt you with too many questions. If you could, with a narrative, and, and perhaps we could have a screen up as you were testifying, but describe the environmental constraints on the site. Describe the environmental encroachments or violations that exist and describe the methods of eliminating or reducing those to the minimum that you've proposed. And as part of your testimony, please share with all of us the permitting that has been completed to date. With that, I'd ask if the floor is yours.
Sure. So as, as Ken indicated, I've, I've broken my testimony into three main components. The first is just to provide you what the existing environmental constraints or environmentally sensitive areas are on the property. Uh, the second component would be to, uh, identify how the current site conditions encroach or impact on those environmentally sensitive areas. And the third would be how the proposed site plan proposes to remedy those encroachments or non-compliance with particular, uh, environmental rules or regulations in the state.
Do you have a preference as to which exhibit the board is viewing?
I think, I think A twenty is probably the, the better one to use.
Very fine. Thank you.
So, one of the things you should understand, I think is, is was testified before, the, uh, the property was developed around nineteen sixty. If you review aerial photography from nineteen fifty-three, nineteen fifty-six, you'll see that the entire upland area of the property was clear cut. Uh, there wasn't a tree left on the site at the time that the site was developed, and there was a smaller warehouse that was built at that time, probably around nineteen sixty. That's sometime during the nineteen seventies, that, uh, original warehouse was expanded to the current, uh, current warehouse you find on the site today. This was mentioned earlier also, uh, the property is located adjacent to Muddy Ford Brook. Uh, Muddy Ford Brook has been classified by the DEP as a category one water body. That's the, uh, water body with the highest water quality classification by the DEP. And as a result of it being classified as a category one water by the DEP, it has an associated three hundred-foot riparian zone. That riparian zone is measured from the top of bank of Muddy Ford Brook. So three hundred feet from the top of Muddy Ford Brook is the limit of the three hundred-foot riparian zone. And it's shown on this color rendering. It's kind of a pinkish line that extends pretty much across the entire frontage of the property. And that's one of the, the challenges we have with this, is the entire frontage of the property is contained within that three hundred-foot riparian zone of Muddy Ford Brook. The site also contains freshwater wetlands. Uh, they are located in the western portion of the property and mainly adjacent to Muddy Ford Brook. And that wetland line is the black line you see towards the top of this exhibit. It has a lot of peaks in it. Uh, you see a lot of pointy areas. That's that freshwater wetland line. And the freshwater wetlands have been, uh, verified and approved by DEP and a letter of interpretation has been issued by the DEP verifying those wetlands. As part of that letter of interpretation, the DEP also classified the wetlands on this property as exceptional resource value, mainly because they function as foraging habitat for a number of threatened endangered bird species. So the site contains wetlands, it contains wetland transition areas or buffers, it contains flood hazard areas, it contains riparian zones. So it has a number of environmental, environmentally sensitive or constrained, uh, areas mainly into the western portion of the site. The, uh, existing conditions, I'll go over some of the existing conditions and how they impact those, uh, environmentally sensitive areas, and some of this has already been discussed by, uh, by Mr. Samonte. First of all, if you look at the, the, the current driveway that, uh, provides access to the property, the portion of the driveway immediately adjacent to Ramtown Green, Greenville Road, you can see it's within the hundred-year flood hazard area. So that, that is an, uh, environmentally constrained area. The remainder of that driveway as it enters the site is also located within the one hundred and fifty-foot wetland transition area, and it's also located within the three hundred-foot, uh, riparian zone. There was some discussion before about the location of the road and detention basin one. And, uh, you can see that the tension basin one is located a hundred and fifty feet from the wetland boundary. It's actually more than a hundred and fifty feet from the top of bank, so it's further into the riparian zone, probably a hundred and seventy-five to maybe two hundred feet into the riparian zone. So, uh, we've located the road in the basin, uh, further from Muddy Ford Brook than what currently exists. The other area that is a large encroachment is that area that was mentioned before. It has the fenced areas, that square uh, feature in the center of the property that shows a lot of, uh, proposed planted trees. That was a former storage area that was fenced in, that they used to store materials in there. That's located entirely within the freshwater wetland transition area. So that's another existing encroachment that occurs on the site. And then lastly, as Mr. Samonte was explaining, there currently is no stormwater management, uh, system for this site. All the stormwater that, uh, runs off of this site runs off directly untreated into Muddy Ford Brook. So it lacks any of the current requirements in terms of what the flood hazard rules or the state stormwater rules require, uh, for a, a property. Now, in terms of what the improvements are going to be, again, some of this has been discussed by Mr. Samonte, but I'll go over them again in somewhat, somewhat more detail. The first is that we're going to be removing the entrance driveway from the, uh, wetland transition area entirely. So we're going to be removing seven hundred and, or seven thousand two hundred square feet of impervious cover from that a one hundred and fifty-foot transition area. So that'll be completely removed by relocating the driveway further to the east. Uh, the outdoor storage area, that's approximately ten thousand square feet. We're eliminating that area entirely, and that's going to be revegetated with native, uh, native plants, uh, characteristic of, of the transition area and all the locations on the property. The current design doesn't propose any encroachments into wetlands, wetland or wetland transition areas. So that's another positive aspect. Even our stormwater outfall is not being discharged directly into Muddy Ford Brook, but into an existing stormwater system in Ramtown Greenville Road. We're also removing that portion of the entrance driveway that's in the flood hazard area, so that'll be completely taken out of the flood hazard area. And as Mr. Samonte indicated, we're moving the entrance road further away from Muddy Ford Brook, so it's further into the, uh, riparian zone, and we're providing a stormwater bio-retention basin, uh, adjacent to it. We have had meetings with DEP on this design, and we have received preliminary, uh, response to them that they approve of what we're doing and that what we're proposing can be permitted. Again, we have not submitted a formal application to them for this yet. Uh, we need to get before this board first, before we'd want to, uh, take that next step. But we have had meetings with them, a pre-application meeting to discuss this design, and, uh, we have gotten favorable response from them. So the site, uh, in addition to removing all the encroachments from the wetland and wetland transition area and, uh, minimizing the encroachments in the riparian zone, the current design also includes a stormwater management plan. It's been designed with the current, under the current, uh, stormwater management rules that were enacted in March of twenty twenty-one. So the stormwater management plan is fully compliant with the new statute and includes multiple small-scale green infrastructure elements, uh, including infiltration and bio-retention basins, uh, which will treat the runoff, uh, to remove pollutants and provide infiltration for groundwater recharge and attenuate the peak flows, uh, coming off of the site. Uh, we're normally required to attenuate peak flows by about twenty-five percent more than what they are currently. This design actually attenuates them by fifty percent more than what currently flows off this site. Uh, and lastly, uh, one of the things that was mentioned is this site was originally on a septic system and well water. Uh, the property owners have eliminated those from the site and they now are serviced by public water and public sewer. So overall, the plan removes all encroachments from environmentally sensitive areas with the exception of the riparian zone, and that's because the entire riparian zone encompasses the frontage of the property. So you really could not access this property without some type of encroachment into the riparian zone, but those encroachments are located more. Could not access this property without some type of encroachment into the riparian zone, but those encroachments are located more. Than one hundred and fifty feet from the top bank of Muddy Ford Brook.
If you could, Dr. Walker, are so and the permitting that would be necessary from the D E P. Would you share your professional opinion with this design, do you anticipate that the exception for that driveway? Is it would be granted by the D E P for this for this project?
Yes, I mean, we had a pre-application meeting with D E P and we provided this concept plan to them, we went over the preliminary calculations we've done for the stormwater plan. And they concur that what we're proposing is. Is approvable under their current rules and regulations and it does meet their current standards, so. You know, we're. Hundred percent or ninety-nine percent sure that this will be approved once it's submitted.
I don't want to make light of your detailed testimony, but. A nineteen sixty-ish site plan totally devoid of environmental protections. Totally devoid of any stormwater management is what exists legally exists on the site. Because of its sixty-plus year history. And all of that is brought to two thousand twenty-one. With the applicant's proposal. Both the wetland delineation, wetland protections that if you the the one hundred and fifty foot buffer associated with the wetlands. If you could just share with the board, that entire one hundred and fifty foot buffer is being preserved without disturbance.
It's being preserved, it's actually portions of it are being restored, as as was testified earlier, that entrance road is located within that transition area, that. Former storage area is located in that transition area. Those two areas will be restored with native plants, whatever landscaping plan that. You know, the applicant and the township's professionals agree on, those areas will be restored.
And and Mr. Chairman, members of the board, although it was described as an existing outdoor storage area. That predated our clients purchasing of the property and it's not outdoors storage that they have used or. Have any need to use, there's no outdoor storage associated with their business. So I have nothing further of Dr. Walker, I think that the significance of his testimony is has been shared with you. Environmental protections that are non-existent are offered throughout the site, stormwater management. Non-existent brought to two thousand twenty-one. As as part of your applicant's offer to support the use variance relief. He is, Dr. Walker is available to you, Mr. Chair, Board Members and Professionals.
I I just have one question, you stated that y'all have a current L O I, correct?
Yes, there is a current L O I for the property.
Can we get a copy for the record, you know?
I think.
I think it was submitted with the environmental impact report.
Was included in their E I R and the determination is a one hundred and fifty foot buffer with the exceptional end. And as Mr. Walker stated, the basin is outside of that a hundred and fifty foot. Buffer for the wetlands.
Okay. Okay, Charlie, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Any questions, Mr. Walker?
So, Mr. Walker, as far as from D E P, so prior iterations of the plan, there was some disturbance within like the hundred and fifty foot buffer and it was like buffer reductions additions, that's completely been eliminated, so there's no. Transition area waiver required with the proposed site plan as we see it now?
That's correct.
And then as far as D E P, what actual permits are required from their end and are there other any outside agency regulatory approvals other than free old soils and things like that?
We'll need, we'll need a flood hazard permit for the encroachment in the riparian zone and as part of that, they'll have to review and approve our stormwater management plan.
Yeah, so not only is it being reviewed by us, it's also being reviewed by D E P and the fact that a permit hasn't been. Submitted to them, it's it's going to be with the new rules that are in place March second, so it's it's. What we're seeing is what D E P is going to be seeing.
Yeah, I mean, we did the best, we did the most we could do at this stage, you know, in in the planning process, because we before the board for a use variance or. Whatever variance it is, you know, we wanted to have at least a pre-application meeting to get feedback from D E P that what we're proposing would be permissible.
That is all I have, Mr. Chairman, from an environmental perspective.
Jennifer, Ms. Bean.
No, I think that the testimony was comprehensive and I was really going to ask the same things Charlie asked, so I'm good.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Mr. Cantor. Mr. Moretti.
No, sir.
Mr. Saya.
I'm good, sir.
Mr. Gonzalez.
No, thank you.
Mr. Martin.
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Payne.
Yes, thank you, so just before I call Steve Rodasty, our architect. During the break, I had the opportunity to to talk to Heim Dubin, who is the contractor who's worked on the site. And I can supplement the record to tell you that our clients extended. The water line at their own expense for the benefit of the public. One thousand five hundred feet. And the line that they installed was a twelve inch ductile iron line. And along that route, they installed fire hydrants as required by. The township and the fire official. There's three fire hydrants, one is actually on our client's property and two are out on the public road. So I I was not fully informed when early, but fifteen hundred linear feet of twelve inch ductile pint- a ductile iron water line. Was installed by our client at their own cost and expense. It does provide them with a water supply, but it also brought the water to the the general public. And when you asked about, there was a question about utilities, there the gas, Mr. Conlon, the site is serviced by gas and the gas is already on the site, so. With that. Bit of information, if we could go to Steve Rodasty. I know that he has testified before this board before. I still am going to ask that he share for this record. His credentials, including his education and professional background. Mr. Rodasty, can you join us?
Yes. Yes, my name is Steve Rodasty, I've graduated with a bachelor of architecture degree from New Jersey into Institute of Technology in nineteen ninety-two. I became a registered architect in New Jersey in nineteen ninety-six. I'm currently a principal at Perez Rodasty Associates as a licensed architect. I presented in front of dozens of boards in New Jersey in the last twenty-five years, including also presented in front of Hal Township.
You've testified, I believe, before this is oning board on a number of occasions, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Would you accept Mr. Rodasty as an architect and allow him to so testify this evening?
We we accept Mr. Rodasty's.
Thank you. Mr. Rodasty. If you could let Mr. Howard know those exhibits that you would like to have available as you make your presentation.
Okay, great, I was wondering actually if I'd be able to to share my screen for some of the exhibits, would that be a possibility?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just identify them for me as you, so I can make sure they're marked.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I I have here in front of me exhibit A thirteen, which I believe is already marked, it's a color rendering of the architectural plans.
That's not what we're seeing.
You're not seeing that?
No, we're seeing a whole lot of text.
We're seeing like your, the list of items. In the folder.
You got multiple monitors, you might have the wrong one sharing.
Let's try that one more time then. There with me one second. Not now either, right?
Not now, yeah. You need a millennial, you have one handy?
I I think I think we'll have it now, let's see here. How about now?
Not yet.
Really?
Yeah.
Steve, if you have it on, if you have multiple monitors, you might need to just drag it from the one to the other.
That's interesting, because I only have the one monitor here, I have multiple windows. But I'm surprised we can't see C S one currently, is what you're saying.
We're saying that your list of exhibits.
Why you keep double clicking, that's what we see.
But you, but it won't open, okay?
Well, you, oh, Mr. Howard is right there, ready to pull the trigger for you.
We're gonna put them up for you.
Yeah, actually, if you wouldn't mind doing that and if you went and put in sheet A thirteen, I don't know why it's not sharing tonight, I apologize.
Yeah. There you go.
Okay.
So if you could, tell us what we're looking at and tell us what what the goals were for this building. That doesn't belong on, there you go.
So so first of all, I just wanted to talk about the existing building. The existing building is approximately seventeen thousand two hundred ninety-three square feet. And approximately three thousand thirty-five square feet of that building is used for office space. The remainder of the building is is currently used for warehouse. That building is a one-story block building with painted façades. And the existing building is generally devoid of any. Interesting architectural features. Our goal is to add additional warehouse space to the existing building and to greatly improve the aesthetics and functionality of the building. Our proposal is is what you see on the screen here is to add a new one-story warehouse addition to the existing warehouse. This addition would be approximately twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eight square feet. The additions approximately a hundred and eight feet deep by two hundred forty-nine point eight feet long. The addition would be attached to the existing building within approximately sixty-four foot long by twenty-five foot deep connecting piece. And this piece would be used as a truck loading dock area with four overhead doors. There would be set in from the existing and proposed buildings, so the trucks would be screened. And loaded materials can be brought into either the new or the existing portions of the building through this connector piece. The addition would be constructed of insulated concrete panels and be a maximum thirty-five feet tall. So this this addition would be consistent in scale to the existing building. Is only slightly larger in size and the elevations vary in height and step down to the heights of existing buildings.
Now, is this, I know you stated concrete walls, this more so you're talking tilt wall?
That's correct, this would be a tilt-up concrete construction, so there'd be insulated sandwich panel walls.
Correct, so actually the architect, you can basically do anything you want to with it, correct?
Yes, that's correct, it it's.
The aesthetics is what I'm saying.
Aesthetically, I can, it can be different colors, different heights, different textures. Things like that, yes.
Now, as far as the breezeway, that's the loading dock area. That that's going to be designed to accommodate forklifts to go in and out of the trailers, correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay, now, well. When the truck backs up, is that going to be have dock levelers on it?
Uh, yes, they would, yes, the four, the four doors would have dock levelers, correct?
Okay, thank you, that's all I had, but I I just wanted to find out whenever you said the the concrete walls. The I'm familiar with the tilt wall construct.
Uh, yes, it would be approximately ten inch thick insulated tilt-up concrete panels.
Now, are they going to be port on site or are they going to be delivered to the site?
I I don't know the answer yet, but I but probably on site, but they may, they may be precast and brought on site. The aesthetics of the two could be almost identical, just more of the fabrication technique.
Steve, if I could just ask a clarifying question, so we're saying it's a building addition because the breezeway connects to two buildings and it has a shared roofline?
Uh, that that is correct, so since exactly, since they're attached, it's it's really an addition, not a separate building. It it won't have to have a firewall because the existing building and the new building will both be sprinkled. So it'll be just an expansion of the existing building with with improvements.
Okay, and then the loading dock, so the doors that are shown there, are those, is the loading, can the truck actually like back in and be recessed into the loading area or is it just. Bust right up to the to the building?
Uh, they they butt up to the building, I guess what's not shown here is that the grade drops. I guess slopes down towards the overhead doors, so so the overhead doors would be at four foot height, one of them may have a ramp for. For. A forklift to go inside of the building and the other three, it would it would back up and there's a drain outside of the building.
Okay, yeah, I just want to clarify for the board, because the site plan kind of shows the four. Like entrance ways with like a box with the X, so I just wanted to make it clear for the board, the trucks aren't actually backing into the breezeway, it's just right up to the face of the building, right?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And I'm going to interrupt just for once, just for a moment, if we could return to A twenty. Which which would give Steve an opportunity to kind of show how these, these are inside. Inside the building. There you go, so Steve, if you you could just, Mr. Rodasty, on the record, if you could just. With this view, describe how that breezeway would 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 function and just if you point out how. The trucks would actually be surrounded by the building on three sides while loading and unloading.
So so this is the existing building on the left in the breezeway. Uh, in the center and our proposed building on the right, so buildings would back, trucks would back up. Uh, to the building and they'd be between the existing and the proposed building, so they would be screened from view. Uh, and it would also help with sound intonation being. Surrounded by the building on three sides, so the trucks are kind of hidden in that area, which which I thought was a nice detail.
And and if you could, board members, noting the location of the parking. Along the proposed addition. As we now go back to Steve's exhibit, I'm going to ask Steve if you could identify the man doors. That are available for those employees to enter the building and to get to the front office.
Uh, yes, so so there would be man doors in the center. On the north side of the addition in the center, there would be a. Set of double doors that's inset with protection from the weather. By, there would be employee parking in this area. Employees can come in through this proposed warehouse. And they could travel through the breezeway and there would be, there would be inside the building, there would be an egress path, which a striped egress pass. And it would also pass through the loading area into the existing warehouse. We would also have a safety guard or safety rail at that striped egress pass. To keep people on the path and to keep forklifts and things like that off of the path.
Thank you. Going to ask if you could, I think if if you could go to the exhibits, the perspectives of the building. If we go to and and Mrs. Robano, are are those labeled? Can we bring it there, I know they, we only got them to you today, but if we could bring up. The 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 drone aerial shot first.
Ken, before you just jump off this, one quick question for Mr. Rodasty, so the architectural exhibit that's shown right now. Along the north side of the building, I know you said there's the recessed entrance way, the main entrance way, there's two additional entrance ways along that facade. That are like in conflict with parking spaces, how are those functioning with those doors opening up into parking spaces?
Um, the, yes. Yeah, to to be honest, those two probably won't be there, we had egress doors throughout the building, but for fire egress, but those those two. Are not necessary for fire egress, they're beyond our path, those two doors shouldn't be there.
Cool, thank you. So we we had perspectives done of the building.
And are you talking about the photos?
Yes, that that's the first one, this was the first one and this is. Just to give a perspective of the site and I was going to come to these two after. This is a perspective of the site, showing the building after facade improvements have been made and showing the general layout. And then a very important exhibit and is an exhibit that shows what the building will look like from the ground. And we did it with no land. And we did it with no landscaping, so you could see the building. That's not our plan. We just want you to see the building, and I'm gonna ask Steve to describe it. And the next exhibit is going to be with landscaping. But first, I wanted the building to be seen by you, so you can get, but that's, that's later. Let's, let's, if you could, the middle one, and we'll have to give it a label.
I labeled all three as a set of three photos, A eighteen.
Thank you. So if, Steve, if you could take us through, beginning with this drone picture of the building. Describe what we're seeing, and then take us to the middle one where we can see the building well. And describe the architectural features. Let's see if Mrs. Beam is going to like your architecture tonight as much as she has in the past.
So.
You never know.
So this is an aerial photo taken by drone approximately a week ago of the site. But the front building is the existing building. And then added, added to this were several other features that were digitally added, added. Our addition is shown in the back portion behind the existing building. You could see how far it is, you know, from the street. It's not so visible from the street, and you could see how it's surrounded by, currently surrounded by existing trees. This is showing the new, the new driveway onto Ramtown Greenville Road.
And before you go to the next exhibit, Mr. Chairman, member of the board, members of the board, we're not taking trees down. We're, we're taking trees down for the building, but we are supplementing throughout the site. So what you see as existing trees is going to remain. If we could go to the second, so that we can get the perspective of the building from the street. And with this one, I'm going to ask if you could describe the architectural features that would be added to the building. Perhaps materials, color, and the use of architectural features.
Yes. So what you're seeing here is the existing front, the front of the existing building. Front entrance and windows. Our plan is to follow the same look as, as our proposed addition on the facade of the existing building. So we plan on having a similar look with pilasters, with coloring. And, and the look of the materials around the existing building also, to accentuate the front entrance and to tie it in with the new addition.
And I think perhaps if we go to the last one, just to give a sense of when the landscaping is installed, what the appearance would be to the traveling public. There you go.
And in this rendering, it's the same rendering as before, from the same view. But showing the buffer of trees in front of the building, showing that the the building won't be that visible from the street anyway, even though we plan on improving all the elevations of the existing building.
I would, Mr. Chair, again, we are fully aware of your professionals' requirements, especially Miss Spiro's requirements, and this board's requirements. We anticipate that this typical landscaping plan is just that. The final landscaping plan will be as directed. But we wanted to give you a sense of its, of its, the value of landscaping in that area. Mr. Redasti, I think that our presentation of the architecture is complete. I would ask if, do you, is there anything further that you have on the proposed building to share with the board?
Yes, so. Well, I just want to point out that during the design of the building, I worked with the planner Jennifer Bean to implement the architectural goals of How Township into the building design. And the building complies with section one eighty-eight dash two twenty-eight, the general non-residential architectural design standards of How Township.
And, and we're only looking at the fronts of these buildings. Did you carry the, the facade treatments around all four sides of the building?
Uh, yes, I, I did. We carried the same materials, same multiple colors, the same mixture of textures. Full windows and other facade treatments around all four elevations of the addition. And we want to carry something very similar to the existing building.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have no further direct examination of Mr. Redasti. And he is available to you to answer your questions.
One, straight to Ms. Beam.
So I will say that I agree that I worked with Mr. Redasti, and he and I went back and forth a couple of times. And I think the plans you submitted are great, and I think they comply, as you said. I don't think those renderings did you any favors at all. I don't like them at all. I think they're very boring. And all the detail that you've spent a lot of time and effort putting into your plans are absolutely lost on the rendering. I don't think that helped you at all. So with that said, you know, the plans that were submitted, I think comply, and there's enough you know, vertical breaks, and there's some horizontal interest, and he did put some full windows and some architectural features, which I think comply with our requirements. But I have to tell you that looking at number one, the drone, and number two, the rendering from the street, you cannot see it at all. It's lost. It becomes just one blank, boring-looking building.
I'm not sure, Steve, if that was a compliment or not.
It was. I think it was a compliment. I think you worked very hard, and I think the plans are consistent with what our vision is. I just don't think that what was shown in those renderings really shows the detail that you put into it.
Duly noted.
Know what I'm saying? Like, all the, like, the plans that you had up when you were describing, like, the breezeway and the man doors showed all the visual interest in the detail, and then you pull it way back. And I also have a question, because the plans look like they're more grayscale, and that rendering looks like it's like a cream color. So what are we talking about here?
Well, the, the rendering, the two-dimensional rendering that I was presenting is the look that we're going for. The, the rendering, you know, the rendering wasn't done by my office in How. It was a messy model that was, that was done, not so much to show what the building would look like, but what it would look like in relation to the site.
I understand, and the screening and how it's really gonna be hiding the building from the road. I do understand that.
Showing any of the architectural detail.
Right. That's, that's the point I'm trying to make, is that I want the board to focus on the plans, because that's what the building is gonna look like with all of the design elements that Mr. Redasti put into them. I think they've become muddled with the exhibit. That's all.
Duly noted. We will. Future exhibits will be done by the, by Mr. Redasti. We'll make certain that they're.
Stick with what works, my friend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further, Jennifer?
No, I, I mean, I, I do want the board to be aware, and you know that I'm usually pretty tough on the architects, but I do think that Mr. Redasti, you know, was very proactive in working with my office to make sure that when they came to the board, he was presenting plans that are consistent with the vision. I mean, he's done a lot of work now in town, so I think he's kind of gotten the general gist of what we're kind of looking for, especially in these types of buildings, and I, I think he did a really nice job on the architecture.
Well, see, one thing, I, I'm gonna throw this out there, too. One thing about the tilt wall, you can do a lot, there, there's a lot of imagination that could be put into that building. You know, just, just due to the fact that you're building the walls to tilt them off. You know, there's so much more you can do it than just brick and mortar.
Yeah.
I, I agree. I like, I like working with tilt up, because there's so many things you can do.
Yeah, I've done, I've done many a square foot of it, so.
He's ruined many a hearing for other architects. Let me just say that. Now I know what can be done, so that I'm not accepting that this is all we can do thing, so. But I do, there's a lot of work into it, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're fortunate to have in central New Jersey, some of the, some of the most accomplished tilt-up contractors, just really great companies, yeah.
Remember Mahoney Tross. They're one of the original, and I taught two of their crews. I, we brought it up thirty years ago.
Wow.
Up in Mine Hill. That's what brought me to New Jersey.
Really?
Yes.
Very interesting.
Anyway.
The only other question I have, do you have floor plans done, or is that something that you're gonna submit with the site plan?
Floor plans of the, the proposed addition or the existing?
The interior floor plan showing like the difference between the warehouse space and the office space and that kind of stuff.
Um, I, I did, I did actually prepare a floor plan of the existing building, and then I have a separate floor plan of my proposed building. But the proposed building is just, right, this, this plan is of the existing building. And then my connector piece is here, so it shows what's currently out there. Freezer space, refrigeration space, existing warehouse, and all the way on the left, existing office space, and then this portion on the bottom is what, what's being removed for that buffer.
Bump out, yeah. I'm talking about like the breezeway and the, the proposed building.
Um, I, I just showed the outlines, but I could, I could add more information if you'd like, sure.
I, I would say that, you know, it's something that perhaps should the board act favorably on the application, it be submitted as part of resolution compliance.
Oh, yes, I could do that.
Okay. That's all I have on architecture. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
On, on the architecture itself, the, the existing building, that, is that gonna be retrofitted? Because I doubt if it has sprinkler system in it now, but is that gonna be retrofitted out with sprinkler system?
Uh, yes, it is. Yes.
So, so the entire existing and proposed construction will have sprinklers.
Will, will be fully compliant and have a working sprinkler system, correct?
Charlie?
Mr. Chair, the only question that I have is, um, the rendering of the building, of the existing building. I guess along the west frontage kind of showed a, an entranceway and some addition, additional walkways and stuff like that. Is, is that something that's being proposed, Ken, or, or Steve? Um, because it doesn't look like it's shown on the site plan. I just want to make sure if it is, you know, if it gets the site plan, it's included.
Yeah, in the perspective, that's inaccurate. That's, that's an artist. That's inaccurate.
Yeah, just if, if the board rules favorably and this gets a site plan, I just, you know, site plan be revised and included in the stormer management analysis.
Hey, board members, any questions? Mr. Sayah.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I have questions.
Yes.
Okay, so, the overhead view, the satellite view of the site shows that you have encroachment, of course, in the buffer zone into the riparian zone, et cetera. There looks like there's the old storage area, and amongst the vegetation, there looks like there's some other debris storage, et cetera, over on that side of the, of the property. So when I look at Mr. Redasti's drone view, you know, I said, okay, I'm looking at it from this perspective. Where is that basin? The first thing I should pop out is that basin that you have on the rendering as you're, as you're presenting it. Then the second question that comes to mind is, okay, so there is a propensity for vehicles and storage on that side of the property. How are we going to prevent that if, in fact, this thing moves forward, right? So the question for me is, are we gonna fence line that and, and ensure we don't have, you know, encroachment into that area?
Could we put up A twenty so that we have a clear understanding of your concern, Mr. Sayah? I think I'm following, I think, but, so if we could have A twenty. And I think, Mr. Howard, do you have, yeah, there we go. So are you, is, is it the, let's see, the, the western side of the driveway that you're suggesting should be fenced, or asking if that's gonna be fenced?
The old, the, the driveway that you plan on removing.
Right.
There, and where there's existing vegetation off the corner of the existing building across the proposed riparian, there appears to be a lot of debris, storage, a trailer, trucks, parking, et cetera, over there.
Yeah.
So, so, so for me, you know, if this, this is a nice, clean rendering, how are we going to prevent? You know, and from the environmental perspective, of course. Uh, how, how are we going to ensure that we don't encroach in that environmental sensitive area afterward?
Ken, this might be something that Mr. Walker could touch upon. I know, obviously, if you're getting TAW permit, there are requirements that you have to propose fencing and dedicated conservation easement to follow that line. This is different that you're not getting the TAW. I don't know if there's any requirement with FHA to put in a fence and deed restriction as a conservation easement, but that might go along the lines of what Mr. Say is saying. I think he just wants to make sure we're rectifying, or the applicant's saying they're rectifying this prior disturbance. How do we prevent that from happening in the future?
Thank you, Charlie.
Uh, if I may, the legal answer, which is just, that's all it is, is the legal answer, and then Dr. Walker can give us some real boots-on-the-ground answer. The legal answer, Mr. Sayah, is that we've offered that we'll put all of those areas in a conservation easement dedicated to the town that says these areas are not to be disturbed, and that would be a permanent recorded instrument. That doesn't, I mean, those are just recorded instruments. The, Dr. Walker, if you could describe things that could be physically created on the property, either through structures or landscaping that would enhance that position.
Yeah, I mean, the, the DEP, if you were going to do a transition area averaging plan, which you're not in this case. But typically, if you are and you're reducing the transition area at certain locations, they require you to put a split rail fence up. They don't want you to put a permanent fence in with footings, but they require a split rail fence because you're in the transition area. You could do something like that at selected locations, if you thought there was some opportunity for encroachment. It, I mean, it looks like in the front of the building, you've got the basin that kind of acts as a barrier to any encroachment where the original driveway is, and in the rear of the property, you have a basin that would probably inhibit any encroachment there. I think maybe Mr. Sayah's concern is that area that was the former storage area that there, maybe there can be some fencing put in there, in addition to any deed restriction or conservation easement.
Those are our client's goals. The goals are to restore them and then not to use them. So the combination of legal instruments and, and physical elements, fencing or landscaping, or all tools that we would invite the board to work with us to make certain that we accomplish that goal.
And then, Mr. Pape?
Yes, sir.
So when you remediate and you remove that driveway.
Yes.
Right, you're gonna block it through vegetation and as such, from anyone going in in that direction, correct?
At the roadway, we definitely will.
Ground, you know, a, a recreational area, you know, you know, an area where, you know, we're having cookouts and stuff like that.
No, no. It's going to be a conservation easement area that's going to be a restricted area that's allowed to just naturally re-vegetate. And we're, working with Shari, we'll make sure that up by the roadway, that that, there's no, not even a remnant of an apron. We'll just make sure it's all landscaped close.
Shari, you go with that?
Well, also, you could put a split rail fence up there, too.
Yeah, that's fine. Well, I, I know they have evergreens along the frontage. I'd like to add some shade trees there, too, but yeah, we'll definitely work on that. There's also the other circular graphics you see. Those were added. I guess that was, was that a DEP project? Those are newer trees that were planted there all the way on the left there?
Yeah, it's part of the, when they did the bridge rehab.
Right, that's.
They used, they used that area immediately adjacent to Muddy Ford Brook as a staging area for their supplies and their equipment. So when they were completed with the bridge restoration, with the bridge repair, they were required to restore that area. They did some limited planting of trees and some seeding in there.
Right, yeah, so there's some newer trees over there already, so we'll just, you know, expand it.
I, I just want to bring up with regard to the fence, which I'm totally fine with, if that's what the board would like. They would just, if, if the fence is less than fifty feet from the right-of-way line, it would require relief, because that's a residential buffer. I'm not saying that I don't support the inclusion of the fence. It would just be relieved that the board would have to grant in order for the fence to go there if it's less than fifty feet from the road, basically.
I, I don't think the board would have an issue granting the league that keeps people out.
I agree. I just wanted to make sure that the record was clear and that Ron got it down for the resolution, if the board acts favorably on the application in its entirety.
So, and Mr. Chair, I, I think it would also. So, and Mr. Chair, I, I think it would also be prudent and it's more explicitly stated in the ordinance for conservation easements for like perimeter buffers. But I think it would be good in this case for the applicant to set monuments along the conservation easement line if it's to be dedicated. A fence can be moved, you know what I mean? And, you know, ownership of the property can change. But if that's set in stone with monuments along there, that just helps any future owner know the restriction on the properties to hopefully avoid this in the future.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Conliff, that, that has become a, a recurring requirement in some of the other communities throughout Monmouth and Middlesex County. So those, those monuments that are in the ground and above the ground and typically have an environmental um seal on them. Would, would be acceptable too.
Miss, Mr. Sayah, any further question?
Uh, just, you know, Mr. Chairman, it's a, it, it's nearly a half an acre of additional square footage of a building. And is, and it looks like that, that's like a, a, a story and a half, or is it two stories? Is that, is that what we're looking at? Are we doubling the square footage by putting a second level there or, you know? I'm, I'm trying to understand that building or just a little bit more.
I think it's just a single story building, but I, what you're seeing in the rendering of the, the architect's. Is this visual aesthetics. Am I correct?
Uh, that, that's correct. It is just a single story building. Um, to, to add visual interest, we have the parapets of the building sloping in some portions and um, you know, rising and lowering in height. Um, and then it drops down some at the breezeway because there would be no, uh, no major storage in the breezeway area. Uh, so we did that for visual interest, um, but it would just be a one-story building, correct?
And Mr. Reddasty, it's the office space that's proposed. It's just one-story office space. There's no intent to make it two-story or have some separate mezzanine office somewhere else in the building.
Uh, that's right. Actually, we were proposing um just warehouse in the proposed addition. And the existing building has um, uh, office and warehouse space, but that's correct. There'd be no mezzanine proposed.
So the rear is just to be utilized as warehouse in conjunction with the front building?
Yes, that's correct.
The only element of the rear building that could be considered office is we envision that there'll be a desk, a four-by-six area. Where the warehouse manager has a phone and a desk, but it will just be right in the warehouse room. It's, it's not cut off. So if that's an office, we have a twenty-four square foot area where the warehouse manager would stand.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Sayah?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Have no other further questions, sir.
Uh, can we get the, there we go. Uh, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, Mr. Reddasty, um, the, what I see on the warehouse, I mean, the proposed new building in the back. Uh, appears the asphalt for the parking lot for those sixteen spots are coming right up to the structure of the building. And all I see maybe is the concrete bumpers. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay, is it because of the restraints on how much, you know, space you had for the width? For the drive-by in the back that there's no concrete walkway or anything in front of this warehouse?
Yes, that was, that was when the uh, the site engineer was designing uh, the site. He had, um, he had limited space for that. So, um, so there wouldn't be a sidewalk against the building, correct?
Okay.
So, and just to clarify that for the board, so the limited space is in a result of um, you know. Obviously you have environmental constraints, but like could a sidewalk be um accommodated? Yes, but it would probably mean that the building would have to lose some footprint to accommodate that.
That's what I thought. That's all I have.
Mr. Cantor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, question about the front building, the existing building. Will the, will that be, is that being remodeled or, or changed or upgraded in any way to match the, the, the back, the new back building?
Um, y- y- yes, it, it is. Um, I guess um, the facades of the buil- the, the existing building is a block building in the front. Um, and we're going to modify the facades to uh, to coordinate with the facades of the proposed addition. So it would have a similar motif with uh, same colors and architectural elements uh added to the front building. Uh, the front building's not tilt-up concrete. It would probably be in stucco uh, or some other material to look uh, similar to the tilt-up concrete.
Okay, um, yeah, I drove by there and it, it's not close to that yet, so it's going to need to, to look good and especially the front. So I'm excited about that.
Uh, yes, it, it will be.
Thank you.
You're kind, sir.
Mr. Moretti?
No, sorry, no questions.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Pape?
Really, Mr. Chair, uh, uh, an indulgence, I had promised Mr. Stefanski that I would take a two-minute recess before I called him as a witness.
Okay.
But actually, I, two to th- two to five minutes as you choose.
Two to five minute, five minute.
We'll be right back. We will be right back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will take a short recess. They'll be back at nine thirty-three.
Okay, Mr. Pape?
Yes, sir. We are ready if you are.
We are, sir.
Very good. Thank you. And thank you for that courtesy.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Steve Stefanski is one of the family members who is operating the business from this building. And he and his brothers own the building. And as I indicated in my opening remarks. The Stefanski family, some sixty-four years ago, started in the food business and now the third generation of Stefanski. Men are running this business and you'll hear his description of the business. They distribute food, as I indicated to, a number of trades throughout the, the area. Um, and we're going to talk about how they actually operate the business, the number of employees that they have. What they envision the growth of their employees would be, the number of trucks that they have and the growth that they anticipate that could occur. There is anticipation that there'll be some growth. The business is a vibrant business and it's growing. But as you'll hear, the, 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 the increase are generally small numbers. Um, four trucks going to six trucks, three warehousemen going to six warehousemen. And then when the automation takes over, goes back down to three or two warehousemen. But having, having said those couple of remarks, I'd ask if we could have Mr. Stefanski. Um, he has been sworn. I'm only going to ask that he confirmed that he is your applicant and that he's an owner of the, of the property and the, the business. Not going to qualify him as an expert and then ask him to talk to you about his business, um, with me leading him with a series of questions. Welcome, Mr. Steve Cement Stefanski. So. If I could, Mr. Stefanski, you heard me describe that you're third generation, your grandfather started this. And that you're the owner of the building and the business, just if you would confirm on the record, those were accurate statements.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And that it's with your brother Abe and Jacob that you're running these businesses?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you describe, I think no one can describe your business more accurately than you do. Describe what this business is that is currently being operated from this building.
We are in the food service and retail distribution. Um, we service many hospitals, um, jail systems, major supermarkets chains. Food banks, um, et cetera, and we're considered a great distribution business um, with all major food stuff. From hand, canned foods, frozen foods and provisions.
And I think it's, it should not be omitted that you supply the American Red Cross. Is that correct? Thank you. And.
Thanks military as well.
Oh, and I would like to talk about how you run the business and, and, and we'll, we'll do a, a day in the life of the, of, of the building. And um, so it's seven o'clock in the morning and you've shared with me, seven o'clock in the morning, the building opens to the public. Uh, yeah, o- opens, not to the public, it's open. Who's the first person there?
I would have my warehouse manager open up and start the day.
People who work with the warehouse manager currently, how many warehousemen or pickers do you have employed?
Currently, two.
So your, your business is running with two pickers and one manager?
Correct.
And those pickers arrive between, do, do they arrive early in the morning? If they, we have no time, the warehouseman does?
Within that timeframe, by seven fifteen, seven thirty, they're arriving.
There are other employees in the building and the, I think that you have office workers in the building. If you could describe who those office workers are and how many office workers are there?
That would be myself and my brother Abe and another four office workers that come in. Approximately between the hours of eight and nine.
And I think you have drivers who drive trucks for you that are your employees?
Correct.
How many drivers work for you?
Four.
And you also have a sales force. Does their sales force come to your building?
Uh, possibly once a month when we call a meeting, you know, just to review some sales and growth for the business. But they do not currently have an off, any office space at the warehouse.
And in the design that you're offering as the building design, you don't intend to create any office space for your salespersons?
Correct.
Right. So if you could, with three warehouse workers, if you could describe what they do. If, what pro- how product is brought to the building and what the warehouse workers do to create packages to go to your customers?
Product can be brought to the building via truck or tractor trailer. Um, and that would get unloaded and put away if it needs to be palletized or it's a floor load when we're getting the delivery. So we would have, you know, our pickers, which would then sort of become lump, lumpers, which mean unloading trucks. Um, palletizing the products, sorting it out, putting it away, um, pending if there's multiple products on that delivery. At that point, um, we would, we would have our, our sales force taking orders. Via iPad coming into the system. Um, our workers would be picking those orders. Then those get shipped out, put on like a pick pack and ship, put on trucks and get delivered to the customers.
So couple, let's quantify things. On a daily basis, I mean, you currently have your businesses operating. It's been there since you, it's my understanding, it's been there since you bought the building in two thousand seventeen. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
So this business that we're talking about is not a business that would be brought to the building. It's there. This is the business that's currently there.
Correct.
But so, product comes in, trucks or tractor trailers and it's unloaded. On a daily basis, Mr. Stefanski, how many tractor trailers are coming to your site?
Approximately two.
And do you anticipate that that number will increase if you have additional storage space?
The answer would be yes. Um, however, however, it, it's pending a sea, like uh, the season. Um, you know, a holiday season where, you know, I would need that third trailer possibly.
So it's, you don't see the tractor trailer tra- movements being substantially increased if you have additional storage?
No.
And currently, do you have your own fleet of trucks for distribution?
Yes.
How many trucks?
Four.
Four drivers, four trucks and those trucks are, if you could describe, are they articulated tractor trailers or are they box?
No, currently, those trucks are currently twenty footers. Um, at, at some point, possibly, once we can expand to more food products. Um, it would, you know, call for extending those trucks between twenty-four footers to twenty-eight footers.
So you anticipate that you're, that as you replace trucks, you'll go to the next larger box trucks?
Yes.
And I, and if, as, if, if business were to increase as a result of the additional storage area. Have you and your brother projected the number of additional trucks that you anticipate would become part of your fleet?
Um, I would say, I, I would like it and call it a dream of possibly adding one to two trucks. If it's three, definitely you're one of my dream.
Okay, so, and these, so your, your salespeople are going to jails, hospitals. They're going to the catering halls and nursing and they're taking orders and then they're, they're sending that back to your workers electronically. Do you anticipate if you had a greater storage area, that this is going to lead to more customers? Or do you see it enhancing your ability to service your customer base?
I see it enhancing my, you know, you know, the, the, not the food products. Sending to the customer base and um, I think by that offering a much larger variety of products, there would be. That would happen here.
So, Mr. Chairman, board members, I had the opportunity to spend time with the Stefanski family members and to learn about their business. I think that, I, I think at, at this point, if you could describe how you know your clientele and you know their needs. If you could just describe that as you have described it to me previously and why a larger storage area would give you a better ability to service your clients.
For example, just today, I received a call from Kimball Medical Center, good friend of mine, Barry White, the food service director. He's looking for thirty cases of renal meals, which is for kidney failure. However, I just don't have much room to stock more of these products. And the list goes on with that much more products that I can carry to better service the health here in the street.
Big part of your business?
Yes.
If I, I, in my opening remarks, I made statements about employees and you've already shared with us that you have. Three, a, a manager and two other warehousemen. If you added twenty thousand square feet of warehouse area, do you anticipate that you, there would be a greater number of warehouse workers?
Um, not much as I'm looking to become more efficient um, with a high-tech. Um, inventory system, which definitely reduces at least one worker. You know, a UPC system where you would scan everything out of the warehouse. Um, and then, you know, looking for a high-tech pallet wrapper, which definitely, um, I would say takes out another worker. So if I had to throw a number, I would say between two and three.
So you do anticipate there could be more workers, but it's along the scale of two or three?
Yes.
And how about office workers? You've got thirty-four hundred square feet of office in your existing building. And you've got your brother and you and four others. Seems like you've got some extra office space. Do you envision that your office workers staff would increase?
Also by a few.
So if you could just to, to give a sense, you, you, you're, the, the ordinances of the township allocate a certain number of parking spaces. For the building and I think that we've got considerable parking on site. If you could just give us a sense of how many more office workers could be brought to the site to accommodate this business?
Um, I would say four.
Okay, so the growth, your, your, your worker, your employer, employee growth is not something that you see as being substantial?
Correct.
And is it an accurate statement that you're a single shift business? There's not multiple shifts?
Yes, we're just one shift a day.
And you envision that you'll stay as a one-shift business?
Yes.
By six o'clock are most of your workers, maybe you and your brother are the exception, but are most of your workers gone from the building?
Yes.
And that's, that's, that's the way you operate the business? Early closure on Friday, no activity on Saturday. Do you have any limited activity on Sundays?
Um, possibly till twelve to one o'clock, like noon.
Tractor trailer comes in, brings product that you've ordered and it's offloaded by your workers. How long's that truck on site?
It usually takes to unload a full trailer. It usually takes to unload a full trailer anywhere from one to two hours.
During, go ahead, I don't want to interrupt you.
It can be, it can be quicker if everything is palletized. However, not only do we get the trucks palletized, sometimes they come what they call a floor load.
Got it. So, and your business is food. You're, you're selling food products, correct? Perhaps the, the board members would be curious as to types of foods that come in and that you're distributing to these end users. I know it would take an hour to do the whole list, but just give us an idea.
You may laugh at the variety, however, it's from canned fruits, canned vegetables, provisions, frozen dinners, frozen appetizers, all sorts of provisions. That's more or less the offering.
I found it interesting walking through the warehouse and seeing the variety of your foods. If you could, so do, do you ever have a retail customer come to your building?
No.
In fact, do you ever have a wholesale customer who comes to your building?
No, as we do all our deliveries via our trucks, we don't usually schedule private pickups.
So your, your salespeople are creating your orders, and then you're distributing to your customers?
Yes.
Anything, any products that you would call dangerous or flammable products that are stored in your building?
No.
Let's, certainly you have cleaning solvents to keep your, your building clean and healthy, but you, you're not in the business of distributing anything of those foodstuffs?
No. No, we would just have the cleaning our ability.
And, and I think this is an important question. Is there anything that you're carrying that if it were ever to be opened, damaged and open, that would cause any pollution or contamination?
No, no. We don't handle any of those type of problems.
What we're talking about, Mr. Stefanski, is the business that you and your brothers established at this site. It's an existing site, and it's an existing business that you're looking to create additional storage area to accommodate your customers' needs. Pretty thorough statement?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Stefanski, I have nothing further. I think that your description of your business is pretty accurate. I know that board members would like to ask you some questions about your business. Mr. Chair, my direct examination of Mr. Stefanski has concluded, and he's available to you at this time.
Mr. Pay, can you clarify a few things real quick? Okay. There, how long have they been in business?
Well, the Stefanski family has been in business since nineteen fifty-seven. These are the third generation. Their grandfather started the business, it was turned over to their father, and they're currently, these, the three men who are the three brothers are running the business now. This specific business, Mr. Stefanski, if I remember, this specific business of those foodstuffs going to these vendors was started approximately six years ago. I remember it correctly?
That's correct. It's part of the distribution business, yes.
And it's been operated from this building since two thousand seventeen when you purchased it?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the, the building itself, it has not been used as a distribution center, but from all that time. Building was built back in sixty-five, right?
Sixty, nineteen sixty, yeah.
What was it used at that time?
I don't know. I know that our clients have a CEO for their business, but I don't know the, the sixty years of history. I don't. It was vacant for some time, and it was underutilized for some time.
Okay, and they, they got their CEO back in two thousand seventeen, correct?
They do, they did, and currently they are doing interior renovations, all of which has been permitted and is being actively inspected. They're gutting section by section of the building, cleaning it up.
Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
You have any questions or?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So Ken, with the food operation, so everything comes in its package and in can, there's no food processing where you're getting raw products and they're canning it or assembling anything on site?
Mr. Stefanski, I'd like you to answer that question.
Everything comes packaged, boxed, and we're not doing any processing on site.
Okay.
And then, and, and foods never opened, there's no container of food that's ever opened on site, Mr. Stefanski?
Everything comes unsealed and gets put onto the truck seal.
And then, I think also, Ken, it would be helpful because there was talk about how many existing, and then how many additional proposed, maybe if you just mention maximum for each office, warehouse. You know, Mr. Stefanski and his brother, just total for the site drivers, what that total number is.
So if I may, repeat what Mr. Stefanski said, and then ask that he confirm its accuracy. There's a manager and two pickers currently, for a total of three men in the warehouse. There's Steve and his brother AB, and four women in the office. So currently, there are nine people in the building. There are four drivers, so currently, when you add those drivers, it's thirteen employees. And there's a sales force that we didn't quantify, but they don't come back to the building, except once a month for a staff meeting. And there's a vision of there being up to two more truck drivers. There's a vision of being two or three warehousemen, and there's a vision of, I think you said, two to four office workers? Mr. Stefanski, my recall. But there's, that's the size of the workforce.
So total up to twenty-two? That's, I mean, I know you're going like individual, but like I really just care about how many total. Thirteen now, and you're, you say like up to twenty-two, is that accurate?
Three and four, two, three, four, no, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I mean, that leads to the question, I think there's only twenty parking spaces proposed, so where do these additional two employees park when it gets to maximum capacity?
I guess we'd better up with two more parking spaces.
Yes, and, and then also kind of along the lines with parking, so, and I apologize if trains driving through here. So we said there's two tractor trailers to set on a daily basis. Those are owned and operated by some third party, right? That's not something that Mr. Stefanski owns?
No, and, and, and Mr. Stefanski, I can tell we missed an important part of, of, of truck control testimony.
And those will not be parked on the site, right? Overnight, before loading spaces were not, are not for parking. How about, how about, so we say, there's four existing drivers with possible two additional, so does that mean we're gonna have six trucks delivering from the site?
That's, that's the anticipated growth, yes.
Okay, so I guess, do, where do they park on the site, and does it, you know, we have enough parking on site where those can be parked and still have employees parking on the site? And then also, there's an intent, I think you said, for the size of the vehicles to be increased from twenty-four up to twenty-eight feet from what's twenty existing right now? All the spaces that are shown on the site currently, the standard parking spaces are, are I think nine by eighteen or ten by eighteen. So, you know, twenty-eight feet, now those parking spaces, those vehicles are extending into, into the thirty-foot circulation drive aisle. You know, how is that managed?
I think the, the first thing that I would say is, we definitely need to add two parking stalls. The second is that we, we need to show two additional storage spaces for the truck growth if it occurs. Currently, the loading docks handle the overnight parking of the, the trucks.
Okay, so the loading spaces are utilized for the parking of the?
For overnight, yes. Mr. Stefanski, if you could describe how the, the trucks are loaded at the end of the workday, and they leave in the beginning of the workday, just so that, that's part of the record?
Correct. So the trucks will start being loaded as drivers come back, which would be between four to five. Trucks would be loaded for the next day, drivers would leave the next morning between six and seven AM, and it's, you know, it's a repeat every day.
All right, I have a couple, I have a question with regard to that. Number one, if the trucks are on site loaded, that's considered outdoor storage. That's not permitted?
Oh.
That's number one. Number two, you said the site was gonna start at seven. Now you're saying between six and seven, so what time are you actually starting? Like when we're asking for the hours of operation, I need to know earliest to latest.
Okay, Mr. Stefanski, so the warehouse opens at seven AM, when the warehouse manager arrives, is that correct?
Correct.
But the truck drivers could arrive or before that and leave with the loaded trucks?
They have loaded truck, correct.
So do the trucks have backup beeps on them? So when they're backing up, is there gonna be beeping at six AM when there's residences not that far away?
That is an option. We can definitely turn that off. We have safety features, you know, as they're making deliveries to schools, so on. However, we can definitely turn those off on site.
I think it, the trucks are backed in, and they leave forward.
Just assuming that there's no maneuvering. So I'm just saying that six AM beeping in an area that has residences not that far is not ideal.
They're really not actually up, they're just pulling off the dock and leaving.
And, and if, and if that element of the business operation is not acceptable, Mr. Stefanski, you could, you could adjust their leaving, so that it began?
He said that they could turn the beeping off, right? Is that what you said?
Yes.
I mean, I would certainly look for something like that as early as six AM, for sure. Just in the event, I understand that they back into the loading docks and then they're gonna pull out, but in the event that maybe one of them doesn't make the turn right and has to adjust themselves and back up a little bit to readjust, I don't wanna, I don't want beeping to be in that area at six o'clock in the morning.
We can definitely take care of that.
That's great. So, so now, when we're talking hours, you're talking, the warehouse open at seven, but the drivers could leave at six, right?
Yes.
So, so then you're six, so it'll be like six to six, Monday through Friday, and six to one on Sunday?
Six to noon on, on Friday.
Six to, okay, six to, six to six, Monday through Thursday, six to noon on Friday, six to one on Sunday?
I would say six to four to noon as well.
Okay, all right, let me just write that out. The only thing I would ask is that maybe on a Sunday, six is a little early.
We can adjust that.
You know, like I would say, like seven would probably be a little bit more palatable for a Sunday.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention, I, I'm sorry I skipped this. On Sunday, the drivers do not leave before around, between eight and nine.
Okay, that's fine. So then the warehouse is still open at seven, correct?
Correction, on Sunday, they do not leave, only between eight and nine. And the warehouse, I would say, opens between seven, eight. It's called more like that lazy day.
Okay. I would just ask that you stipulate on the record that no activity prior to seven on Sunday?
That's fair. Thank you.
So, and then just to clarify, so the, the trucks are loaded by six PM the day prior, sit in the loading docks, and then when the drivers arrive, then the trucks leave at six AM in the morning?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so along the lines of the vehicle parking, so we said there's a possible up to six, so those are twelve by sixty-foot loading spaces. Is there intent to double stack, park the trucks in that space?
The, the answer is, at the time of site plan, we'll demonstrate that there's up to six parking spaces, and none of them will be in the car parking area.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, board members, Mr. Cantor?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Martins?
Mr. Stefanski, you can control the deliveries, but what about the trucks, the tractor trailers are coming in? Do you have any way of controlling them, so they're not? My concern is if you bring one in at seven o'clock in the morning, and you're backing in a tractor trailer, and you have your trucks there, I don't know where we're gonna be putting your trucks when that happens.
Okay, so absolutely not. We have a schedule. My warehouse manager controls that with times, and we do not accept any trailers before nine. It is a possibility that a trailer is running early, but it will not be unloaded until after nine o'clock. And, and will like pull into the area. However, nothing gets unloaded by nine, before nine.
Okay, so you're okay with having that in the stipulation as far as nothing being unloaded before nine AM? That's, that's what I was trying to get at, because I did, I just didn't want to see a lot of, you know, traffic jam, because it could happen if they came earlier, that's why I was asking.
Yes.
If, if I may, just very briefly, Mr. Stefanski had identified to me the controls that he has over his drivers and those people who come to his site. He also described to me controls that he had over trash removal and recyclable removals. If you could confirm that all of the hours of those vehicles entering the site are under your control?
They are all under my control.
If the board had requirements, the board had requirements on those, those would be requirements that you could accept as, as conditions of any, any relief?
One hundred percent.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of my question. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Miss, okay, Mr. Martin, Mr. Moretti?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sayah?
Waiting to get to public, sir.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you.
Okay. Jennifer, no more? No further questions? Charlie?
Yeah, just one last comment. Obviously, the Fire Bureau reviewed the site plan, and one of the comments, they said, obviously, the site has to be designed with, with fire lanes, fire signage, and all that kind of stuff. And just another food for thought, and it's something that we've seen on a lot of these commercial type applications, Ken, where where the applicant would agree to accepting Title Thirty-nine enforcement on the property.
Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, I, this would be a good.
Mr. Sayah's thunder on that, but.
Yeah, no, it's Title Thirty-nine enforcement is number one. I can tell you that Chief Lewis also required another fire hydrant on site, which we've agreed to. He required the, I just, the three letters that describe the connection on the building.
Siamese, Siamese.
There's a Siamese, F, FTC, am I using the right term? Yeah. He, he, he identified where the FTC would, would be, and he required that the buildings be one hundred percent sprinkled. And as was indicated early on this evening, when Mr. Sumat was testifying, he wanted to have that extra load, that, that siding at the end of the building, so that he could fight a fire from three different locations. So all of his requirements are in what you're seeing.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Pay.
So.
We're little after ten o'clock.
What's your pleasure? I have two more witnesses, neither of which, neither of whom is gonna be short. I mean, John Ray has some substantial testimony.
He needs to get let back in, again, oh, there he is, never mind.
Thank you. So it's ten oh five. What's the witching hour for this evening? And, Mr. Chair, what's the pleasure of the board?
I would like to, I, I know both Christine and John, they're, they're gonna have pretty substantial testimony, and I really don't want to get started into it and then have to, to break, you know?
From our perspective, Mr. Chair, I think that with this has been, so far, these three hours have been exceptionally productive with the witnesses that have testified. I defer to you as to what we do with the remainder of the evening.
I, I think. I I think, I think we need to search for another date at this time, and we'll 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 call it a night. I I really don't want to get started into their testimony and then have to break.
But, fair. So. Eileen, what what are we talking about?
My next available date is June twenty-eighth.
June twenty-eighth, I would ask as if we could, if anyone on our team finds that to be a night that's not a good night, to speak on the record now. If not, I'll accept it. I see all are listening. Mr. Sumat, good? I don't see Mr. Sumat, that is my.
Good, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, and Christine, yes?
Mr. Page, good, yes.
Okay, Mr. Ray?
I'm good.
Very fine. Um, it's Mr. Adasty, we'll need you back. Okay. Well, then I thank you all. We accept the June twenty-eighth date.
I just need an extension of time, please, Mr. Page.
On the record this evening, the extension of time is granted, will grant it through August so that it's in place.
Thank you.
We'll follow it up in writing tomorrow. The witnesses, all witnesses will return. We will be prepared to begin with Mr. Ray's testimony, followed by Ms. Cafones. We will have the transcript prepared by our court reporter, who's been working all night, and we'll make certain that that transcript is delivered to the board members, to to Eileen electronically, and we'll have paper copies also available. I would respectfully ask if the continuance would be without renotice or republication, Mr. Chair and or Mr. Trappel.
No objection.
Okay.
So, okay, for the public that have been patiently sitting by and listening to the testimony, all witnesses will be brought back on the twenty-eighth for public questions or comments to to the witnesses and to the applicant. At that time, once all testimony, direct testimony has been given by the witnesses, we will open it to the public for public questions of the witnesses and comments at that time. Okay, case number BA twenty-one oh seven, three, six, six, Bramtown Greenville Road LLC will be carried to June twenty-eight, seven PM with no further notice.
Mr. Chairman, that is, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals, all, thank you, and good night.
Good night, sir. Okay, board, do do we have any further business from the board? See you none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Cantor? Who seconded?
Moretti.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Moretti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?